Well, it looks like it's time to resume our meeting. And I am so curious about these little colorful packages up there. I'm delighted to have you here. And I was going to ask John Bacon if he wanted to introduce you since he is the representative of Ag in the Classroom, but I missed him. So Kathy, tell me how to pronounce your last name.
Easy.
Okay, well, that's easy. We're delighted to have you with us this afternoon.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Each year I get to come and visit with you about what we're doing in Ag in the Classroom. And I thought I would get your curiosity up a little bit this year. First of all, on the slides, in a little bit, you'll get to see some information from one of our teachers, and that is Audra McCurdy. So don't confuse her with me. And then also, I brought the little packages just because of the season and the fact that the Department of Education has always given us the great gift of your support for all of the programs that we have. And each of these little packages represents some of the resources that we're able to provide for teachers. And so I'm going to do show and tell for a little bit instead of a major PowerPoint. Sometimes I feel like we get Powerpointed to death. So I wanted to show you some of the resources that we have for the teachers and to explain to you some of our delivery systems for the teachers. So in a little bit, I'm going to pass things around to you. And if you just want to glance at them and then pass them on down, then I have a tub at the end that we can put everything back into. So Ag in the Classroom's been around for 32 years now, which is a great accomplishment. And we've been in schools in each of the counties in the state. So there's of the 105 counties, we've been able to provide resources for teachers in each of the counties over the years. And we are really proud about that. And we're thankful that we have teachers who serve on an advisory committee for us. So as the new core curriculum came along and the new education standards, they have been invaluable to us in helping update our lesson plans so that they're appropriate for teachers in today's classrooms. One of the things that we have done in the past that we've backed away from a little bit is the Assembly Program. Not that we didn't like doing assemblies, but as educators, you can relate to the fact that 45 minutes of information, you don't know how much the kiddos take home and actually apply and internalize. And so we are taking a different track now and looking at what we do best, which is teaching teachers and providing them with resources then to put into their classroom, into the curriculum that they already have going. So the project-based learning model is huge for us because that's what we do. And of course, agriculture is the project that we use to teach math, science, social studies, and language arts. So each of our lesson plans on our website and that are available to teachers coordinate with the new standards that you guys have adopted. So I'm going to pass around a couple of sheets of paper that give information about some of our major delivery models. We do summer institutes for teachers. Each summer, we will do three summer institutes, which are three and a half day trainings for teachers. We are able to find local sponsors within a school district to help pay for the scholarship dollars so that the teachers can get professional development hours from the work that they're doing through the class. So what we're doing is we're investing in school districts for two years. So Colby was our first in this model. Last year, they had Connecting Your Classroom to Kansas Agriculture, a three and a half day class. This year, they will have From Farm to Plate. And the reason that we're doing this is we think that it's a great idea to have a cohort group within each school to support each other so that the fourth grade teacher can talk to the sixth grade teacher and say, you know, we talked about this here, and let's build on that. So that is what we want to do, is build a cohort group, plus a sense of pride within the school and a sense of urgency in teaching about where your food comes from and all of the careers that are considered in the pathway where food comes from the field to your plate, since about 25% of all of our jobs in Kansas are related to agriculture. So we want the kids and the teachers to understand the careers that are connected as well. Another delivery method we have is a half-day in-service training for teachers for four professional development hours towards their individual plan. And this is, in some cases, sponsored by Cargill. In the Sedgwick County area, Cargill Cares is helping sponsor for that training. And in the Alatha area, Cargill Cares is also sponsoring those half-day trainings. And what we've been able to do is go into the school on an in-service day, and we go in either in the morning or the afternoon, and then the school has their time to coordinate with their teachers on organizational-type things in the other half of the day. And that has worked out really well. I've been able to customize those trainings to what the teachers want. So if they say, we want to real focus on science, I can do that. If we want to real focus on math, I can do that. And I definitely do cross-curricular, where I bring in the language arts, the reading, and the presentation skills that go along with those lesson plans as well. So that's, we're calling that Agriculture Plus STEM Teacher Workshops. And then in addition to that, we do our partnership training with Kansas Farm Bureau, which is called Be Ag Wise. It's a Saturday training, and it's a six-hour training for teachers and volunteers. And what they get there are six different lesson plans based on a topic that we choose. And this year, our topic is going to be water conservation, which I think is very appropriate for with the governor's water vision and water plan underway and those types of things. So they will get all kinds of learning labs, and they actually practice those so they feel more confident in taking those into their classroom. So that's what Be Ag Wise is all about. Let's see. Okay. Here is information about the A+STEM teacher in-service training. Okay. Now, now I want to do the show and tell where I talk a little bit and show you some of the resources that the teachers are getting during these trainings. Okay? So we're using, we use some of our own curriculum, which I think I've introduced this to you in the past, but we have educator guides. And I brought a few extra in case somebody wants some. But this is a background piece for the teachers so that they can do a better job of teaching the lesson plans that are on our website. And the lesson plans connect to these educator guides. Those educator guides were asked for by Kansas teachers. They were requested so that they had factual information about the biomes in Kansas, the water systems, the soils, the crops, the major crops, the specialty crops, and so forth. It's all in that wonderful book there. So that's something that KFAC has produced. In addition, we have, as I said, our lesson plans on our website. And this is just one example. This is called Beanie Baby. And this happens to be a soybean lesson plan that deals with germination. So the kiddos basically make a little necklace, and they put that necklace next to their heart, so their body warmth helps with germination of a couple of soybeans. And then they can go ahead and plant that. And you would be surprised how connected these kiddos get to these soybeans. They name them. They take very good care of them. And then, of course, once they sprout, they can transplant them into a pot and then begin to watch the whole growth cycle of the soybean. And along that same line, then, I wanted to share with you some posters that we have. These are plant parts labeling posters. And we don't have them just for soybean. We have them for all the major crops, so corn, wheat, grain sorghum, sunflowers, and so forth. There's a series of these posters that teachers can download, parts of the plant, fun facts about the plant, and then the growth stages. So this gets to the growth and development in plant science. I felt like, you know, instead of just looking at Mendel's peas, maybe we should take a look at some of the crops that we actually grow in the state. So that's why we developed those particular posters. And then in addition to that, as I said, we try to connect also cross-curricular to books that are nonfiction, factual books about the different crops. And so I'm passing around several soybean ones. And then there's one called Cool Bean, The Soybean, which is really kind of a cute little book. And inside that book, I want you to notice I have a grid here that connects to some of the lesson plans that we have and supplies needed and so forth. The agronomy students at K-State actually came to me and asked for this. They had received this book, one per student, to take back to their school districts to present a program to their local elementary students during spring break last year. So what a great way to clone myself. And I think you'll enjoy this little book.
Are you ready for a quiz real quick?
Yes, Steve.
How do I say the stage of soybean between emergence and vegetative?
Let me see.
Ah. C-O-T-Y-L-E-D-O-N. How do I say it?
Cotyledon.
Just like it looks.
That's right. Uh-huh. Yep. And that has to do with the two leaves that emerge first.
Okay.
So when it comes up out of the ground, it's a cotyledon, and a soybean is a dicot because it has two leaves.
All right.
Okay. Yep. Uh-huh. And that's contrasted to wheat, which would be a monocot, which comes up just as one stem.
Okay.
Okay? So that's one of the things that they have to learn, is the difference between dicots and monocots. All right. Now, for livestock, we are working with the Pork Council to come up with two lesson plans, and they're just being printed now. So I have the Nebraska version because we converted them to Kansas. But one is called Pig Mania, and one is called A Peak at Pork. And if you look through these, you'll notice that there's a lot of math and language arts, a lot of writing involved in these lesson plans as well. There's the pigs. Okay. And in addition to that, then, I just have this little poster that we had at the Kansas State Fair to say that one of our other delivery methods is we send information out to teachers using our Constant Contact mailing list. And we had teachers sign up at the state fair if they wanted eight free lesson plans. And that has to do with all the commodities that are listed here on the left-hand side of the poster. And so every month, we give them an installment of a lesson plan. In October, it was lesson plans about corn. We had a math lesson plan called Corn Calculations, where we use the kernels of corn to teach the kids mean, median, mode, minimum, maximum, some of their math things. Okay? In November, we did grain sorghum, and we had two new lesson plans. One is called Pop-tastic because, did you know that you can pop grain sorghum? I know if you're in the feedlot industry, we feed cattle popped grain sorghum, but people can eat it too. And it's just a tiny, a little tinier version of what popcorn looks like, only it's from grain sorghum. So we did a Pop-tastic lesson plan where they actually will get to pop some of their grain sorghum. And then we did a Packing Peanuts Go Green lesson plan, which has to do with using the starches to make packing peanuts out of grain sorghum. This next, this month, it will be wheat lesson plans, and January soybeans, February sunflowers, March, April, and May will be cotton, beef, and dairy. So these teachers are getting units of lesson plans that they can use each month. And this is a little bit, a newer delivery method for us than what we have been doing. Now, in your annual report, on the second to the last and third to the last page, when you get a minute, you can look at what our Teachers of the Year are doing with the information that we're giving them. They're doing great work. Tiffany Piatte is from E. Heller Elementary down at Neodachee. And her big project is, instead of a Flat Stanley project, she does a Flat Aggie project. It's a little girl, and she travels all over the United States and learns about agriculture. And of course, through social media and things like that, the farmers can communicate with her students, and they can not only look at the map and see where this particular farm is in comparison to where they live, but also to ask the farmer any questions they would like. And so in this particular publication, we have a picture of Flat Aggie with a little dairy calf. Okay? And then our this year's Teacher of the Year is Diana Deniston from Garden City. And she is doing some great work with what she has created called Ag Math Day. And the children go through different rotations, and they learn math, skip counting, place-based math, all those kinds of fractions, all those kinds of things at each of the different stations. So they learn ag math in the fall. And she just finished her second one of those, and the school district is looking at that as a model for the rest of all of the elementary schools in Garden City, which are numerous. So we're pleased about that. Then I also brought just a real quick little slideshow. Audra McCurdy is a teacher in Williamsburg in Franklin, Kansas. And she is doing a number of things that basically, the thing that I am appreciative of is that she came to one of our summer institutes, and then she adapted a lot of the lesson plans to her elementary school. So you can see here that she had some, some of her students put together some trifold information about agriculture commodities, and then they displayed those at the school. And they also, when they had parent-teacher conference, they had a meal for the parents called Breakfast for Supper. And during Breakfast for Supper, then, after the parents were done eating, they could look at the different displays and learn what the students had learned. Okay? And so this kind of talks a little bit about some of those kinds of things. Now, Audra and all of the teachers that I've been featuring, their kids do get down and into it. Here, they're looking at the soil and looking at the different particles in soil, sand, silt, and clay, which give the soil texture, and that is something that is definitely in the school standards. Here, they were looking at erosion and what is the difference between runoff that comes from a tub with plants that are growing in it versus a tub with bare soil. Again, the whole erosion thing is a big thing in earth science. In addition, her kiddos made apple cider and apple butter, and she said they were just so amazed how good it smelled in the classroom. And then also, many of them had not had apple cider that was warm, or apple butter that was warm. They had just had it out of a jar. And so that was something new to them. They, again, back to the soil, were working on composting projects and introduced a worm farm into the, into the school and a pot bottle compost bin. You can see here their little gardens. Each class had their own raised garden bed. Of course, their sunflowers got giant. And then, of course, they also had vegetables that they were able to put into the, into the school lunchroom. So they got to eat some of their produce. Now, my dad always said, you get more crops out of a crooked row. And I guess that was the point here too, because these kiddos planted some wheat, and it's obviously not particularly straight, but they've got a pretty good population there. And so they're, they're, they take a lot of ownership in this when they're doing, they're doing their crop plots, not only their vegetable ones, but the crops that we raise that provide a lot of economic development here in the state. So there's the wheat that they planted. And here, they've actually taken the product from the wheat, the flour, and made bread in a bag. They learned about how wheat is planted and harvested. I have a teacher in Norton County who's using that whole thing and doing a wheat crop plot, and she ties it into the Little Red Hen story, which is a really great way. And again, the kids take ownership of those fields, and they are watching them every day to make sure that there's not insects coming in or weeds, and making sure that they're watered correctly and all those kinds of things. In addition to that, with other crops, they extracted some soybean oil, and then we talked about the Beanie Baby necklaces. And here's a little light experiment. The soybean plant is trying to get up through the configuration in the box to the light and so forth. And then here's some of her animal lesson plans, grazing like a cow, the digestive system of pigs and cattle, so ruminants and monogastrics. She has some older children who are working at helping build indoor growing systems, outdoor feeding systems, and so forth. So I'm just going to kind of rush through a little bit because she has done so many things with the, with the lesson plans that we've been able to provide her. So I guess this is, oh, here's the little digestive system of the pig. He's got his balloon in there and a straw or two and some other things, very creative uses of things to illustrate the digestive systems of animals. And then this is what my board likes to see, the lesson plans that we've created over the years that she has used this last year. So this is really nice. I mean, and obviously, we wish every teacher would have a list like this. We know that they have shorter lists in some cases. But we're so proud of the work that these teachers do. And we have five schools in the state now who are using the Ag project-based learning system where agriculture is their main topic to teach everything else. You're aware of the Walton School District. Then there is Service Valley Charter School in Neo Show, or Oswego, I'm sorry. There's Blue Stem Elementary in Leon, Williamsburg Elementary in Franklin County, and Chase County Schools are also looking at that. So I think maybe in, we're the top state in the U.S. that has Ag-based, that number of Ag-based schools, and they're going strong. The kids talk about applied learning. They don't want to miss. They come when they're sick even, because they don't want to miss school, because, you know, my job was to collect the eggs or whatever it is. And so they're very invested in their learning experience. So that's just a quick, a quick rundown of some of the resources that we have. I do have a few other pictures that kind of show you some of the learning that happens when we do some of these programs, and you can just look through those and pass those along. And then, Janet, I would just take any questions that anybody would have in the audience or in the, in the, on the board.
Fine. Board members, do you have questions? Jim McNeese.
Thank you very much. Very informative.
Uh-huh.
Very good.
Thank you.
My question relates to budget.
Yes.
You've done an excellent job of raising money through corporate sponsorships, and I'm sure a lot of those come from partnerships that you have with districts working with their local partners.
Right.
You know, and that is undeniably, gotta be a great strength.
Yes.
But on the other hand, each year we've been here, I've seen in the budget that comes before us, you know, $35,000, which, you know, sounds like a lot. You know, I just had it in my pocket, but, you know, compared to the whole budget, it's not very much money, yet that's cut every year. When you lose that money, are you losing the opportunity to leverage that money for additional grants? And so it's not $35,000. It's actually probably more money that you're losing as a result of that cut?
Yes, that's a good point. Our yearly budget is around $230,000, our total budget. And so $35,000 is a pretty big chunk of that. And so you're right. If I can show that I have support when I go to a major grant, like a USDA grant or a National Science Foundation grant, it means a lot to them to see the support in the state that you have for your program. And so yes, that is a very good point, and the leveraging of those dollars is key to that. And so when I do apply for those grants, then I do list the corporate sponsors that we have in the state, as well as show the connection between the local, the local people that are receiving the programs and the grant dollars that we can raise locally. And then a major piece of our funding comes from our crop commissions and our livestock associations. So yes, you're right.
On that application, there's a big zero when it comes to state support
Yeah.
for Kansas, which is an agricultural leader.
Right, right. And I would just say that in, because we're a nonprofit, we are very dependent, obviously, upon all the dollars that we can get from our corporate sponsors, our ag sponsors, and local sponsors, as well as the state. And I know there are some states that have Ag in the Classroom that they are sponsored through their universities, or through their farm bureaus, or through extension, in some cases, cooperative extension. And for instance, my counterpart in Minnesota is sponsored through the Department of Agriculture. So there's a lot of different models for how Ag in the Classroom is able to fund itself in each of the states.
But in each of the models, there has to be money to follow someplace.
That's right.
So if there was something that you could say right now that would enhance agricultural education and awareness and use it also as a catalyst in terms of implementing our college and career standards, as you've demonstrated so clearly here, what would be your wish list if you could do this? How could you upgrade this program if you did in fact have, you know, additional dollars that were provided through the state or through some other, you know, functionary group of the state?
Okay. If I had more dollars.
What would be your wish list?
I would like to have another educator or instructor on staff that could go out and do what I am doing, where I'm doing workshops with the schools, so that I could clone myself so that we could have more, more going on. And then in addition to that, we know that with the way that kids are learning now and the one-to-one iPads and so forth, I need money to hire somebody who knows what they're doing to make my lesson plans interactive on the iPad, so that when a teacher in Enman, Kansas says, we're going to talk about some of our major crops and things like that, then she can say, I want you kids to download this and take the quiz, that they would be able to do that and be able to instruct, basically instruct themselves. So those are what we need.
So that'd be an efficient way of delivering information.
Yes, I think so. Because then, then it doesn't just rely on myself and one other person to travel around, but we would have that kind of thing available. And I'd like to take more videos of our lesson plans because I feel like, again, if the teachers can see someone doing the lesson plan, then they're much more likely, modeling it, then they're much more likely to actually take that into the classroom and feel confident with it.
Do you, and you're working with teachers around the state, my reaction would be from Wichita, that you're in rural America primarily, but are you also in other parts of our state, in the urban areas and suburban?
Yes, yes. In fact, our Assembly Program was primarily urban. We were in the Wichita area quite a lot in Sedgwick County, and we were also in Alatha and in the Kansas City, inner-city Kansas City area as well. So yes, it's not just for rural, it's also for urban, because we've had this resurgence of wanting to be connected to our food. And so if I can have the kids do a growing system in their classroom where they're actually able to eat, to grow and eat the lettuce that they raised, they're much more invested and understand better about, you know, how it is that you actually raise crops and that it's dependent upon weather and all those types of things. So they begin to learn the importance of the infrastructure, that it takes the good roads and all those kinds of things that it takes, the refrigerated trucks to get food to us, perishable food to us. So.
Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
And good job. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. John, glad you could join us. Anything, John, that you would add? I kind of just kind of gave him a rundown of some of the resources that we have. I told him our budget's around $230,000. So, and it's just a tiny bit, yeah, just not a lot. We try to be as efficient with it as we can. And so Jim, your question was right on target there to talk about how can we be even more efficient with our dollars, and if we get more, what will we do with it?
Janet Wall has a question.
Janet?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really appreciate what you do because I think it's very, very important. And you, I don't know if you remember or not, but I'm a member of the Kansas Association of Conservation and Environmental Education.
Yes, Casey.
Yes. And we face a lot of the challenges that you do with this funding thing, because we were one of the 35. But I would like for you to speak, because you guys have joined hands.
Yeah, we have.
With Casey.
Uh-huh.
And I think that's kind of nice, you know, because we have so many similarities. Would you speak to some of the things that you're doing in conjunction with Casey?
Yes, I would be happy to. And also just to say that because we have few dollars for all of us, and those of us that are in the same business of educating with agriculture, and Casey in particular with natural resources, we feel it's important that we work together and collaborate. And so the last two years, we've collaborated with Casey and KFAC and also Kansas Farm Bureau in our Be Ag Wise training, so that each of us provides some instructors for that Saturday training. And this particular year, we'll really be focusing on the Project Wet teacher curriculum. And so each teacher that comes to that training will be certified in that, and they'll get this wonderful, big, thick notebook that has enough lesson plans for the next seven years, probably. So anyway, yeah, so we're able to work together on that. And then the conservation districts have been great supporters of Foundation for Ag in the Classroom, as well as Casey, partly because we, those and the county farm bureaus and the extension folks are people in the counties that know the teachers that would be interested in our programming. And so we rely on them to help us identify those teachers and to help sponsor them to some of the trainings that we do and so forth. So it's been a great, it's been a great partnership, and I, and thank you for asking.
Well, I was impressed with what they were doing together, and I thought, you know, we're struggling, but maybe we've made some new friendships, shall we say? I mean, that we maybe needed to work together, maybe we could even... I mean, that we maybe needed to work together, maybe we could even do even more if the funding were ever, you know, renewed.
Right.
So hopefully, this is the beginning of a great thing, and one of these days, we will see a little more that we'll be able to do with. But thank you for what you do, I'm very impressed.
Yeah, thank you.
Ken Willard.
Thank you, Kathy, for another great presentation.
Thank you.
You've spoken about, in response to Jim's question, what you would do if you had more money. My question is, well, first of all, I've been in two of the schools, the Walton School and the Chase County.
Okay, good.
And I've never seen more community engagement and excitement, and student engagement than I've seen in those programs, in any places I've been. So I think there's a lot of power behind this. Is there a demand that you can't meet right now in the state?
I would say, yes.
Okay.
I mean, if, if we had more people, we could certainly be right out there and doing more things.
So mainly just the ability to hire enough people?
Hire enough people, or do contract labor for some of these direct projects, where we're doing video, where we're doing lesson plans on Facebook and those types of things. Yes, yes. And in fact, I'm lucky that I'm at K-State, because I can access student, student workers who are just sharp as anything, that can come in and help me with some of these technology things that I don't understand. They know it right away, you know, and it's like, oh, we can do this, and it's like, great. So that's been a good source for us as well, and we're trying to, like I said, John knows, because he works on our budget committee, and finance committee, but we try to be as efficient with our workforce and our dollars as we can. But yes, I mean, yes, there is more demand than what we can meet.
All right, thank you.
Which is kind of good job security, in a way.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Uh huh.
And you had mentioned that some of your funding comes from grants.
Yes.
Are you the grant writer as well?
Yes.
You are one busy person, then.
And I have to tell you that it's not so, the grant writing can be an issue, particularly if you're working with a government, government agency, because there are many, many forms, and hoops, and reporting, but the reporting is what takes the most time, honestly. I mean, you can do your job and all that kind of thing, but then the evaluation and the reporting is, is what takes the greatest amount of my time. We did find out just this, last week, that we were, and we, that we received some grant dollars for a grant that we were written into from the Department of Agronomy. It's a wheat genome grant, so it's about genetics, and we will have enough dollars to hire a graduate student from the College of Education at Kansas State to interface with the science team at the Wheat Innovation Center, to help us write 16 lesson plans, six for K through, six for the elementary, six for middle school, and six for high school students. So we're very excited about that, and I'm just getting ready to get my teacher advisory team together, and of course, we'll be matching that all to a number of the science standards. So that's exciting. We've had a number of teachers ask us for lesson plans that explain how we are creating crops that can withstand drought, and all those kinds of things. So, in other words, how are we going to feed everybody over the next number of years? So I'm excited that we got that grant, and it's a two-year grant through the National Science Foundation. And I will say that we do leverage that, in that each time we get a grant, then, and we are able to be successful with those grant dollars, that allows us to be in more consideration for further grant funding. So we build on that.
Well, thank you so much. You're doing a tremendous job, a lot of work, and we appreciate all that you do to help our kids understand agriculture in Kansas.
Thank you.
Sorry, Deana, I just saw your name up here.
Oh, sorry, Deana.
I just, hopefully, it's a very quick question, but that you can answer quickly. Districts, do, are you in every district at some point, in other words, not you personally, but do we have teachers in every district who have participated in, in the training, or have asked for, for lesson plans, or is that, are there some that are kind of lacking in, in that, in that manner?
Yes, you're right. We haven't been in every school district in the state. It's available to every school district in the state if they wish to take advantage of that. But, I mean, and that is if they want to order resources, or if they decide they want us to come out and do a training, you know, we can work them in that way. But you're right, I think right now, I did a, oh, an analysis a couple of years ago, and I think we're reaching around 8% of the elementary students in the state. So it's not a huge percent.
That's not very many.
No, it's not, it's not, and I'm turning into butter, running around doing all that. So, so again, the more efficient way. And then, again, one of the things that we will do with some of the funding that we have, is we need to learn, or figure out a system for tracking the people that access our information online, because that's becoming more and more the way that they're ordering the resources, and that they're using the resources. So we'll be able to give you a better number in a year, once we have that system in place, and can actually see who's using what and how. So, yeah, you're right, it's not a huge percent, and I mean, I would love to have it be, you know, triple that, if we could.
And do you send the information, then, to each elementary school?
I do.
Or is that, so it could stop at the principal's office?
It could stop there, it could stop at the secretary's office, it's whoever decides to distribute that and put it into a box. Some of them are conscientious, and will say, "Oh, gosh, Stacy so-and-so is really into this, so I'll put this in her box." Some of them put it in the teacher's lounge area, at least, on the table, or in the, on the corkboard. But it's, that's always the trick, is how do you get the information out, you know? And so we do a lot of press releases, and, and a lot of it's word of mouth. Teachers that have gone to the training, that loved it, definitely encourage their friends and their peers to go to the training. So that's been a big, a big piece of that. But you're right, Deana, I wish we could do a lot more.
Okay. Well, maybe some of us can, can mention it in our communications with
Yes.
the superintendents, and encourage them to get in contact with you, too.
That's great. And if you would like me to send you just a little bit of a news clip or something that would help you pass that message on, we're happy to do that.
And I would, I would appreciate that, so.
Okay.
I don't, can't speak for anyone else, but, thank you.
You're welcome.
And thanks again.
Mm-hmm.
We appreciate you being here today.
Yes, you're welcome. I'm just going to pull this flash drive out, so it's probably going to say.
Sally Cobble had a comment.
You know, if you would send that to our board secretary, she could send that information out to all of us, because some of us have newsletters and some don't, but she could send it to all of us, and
Okay.
Appreciate that.
I would be happy to do that. Thank you. All right, thank you, my dear. Appreciate it.
She has all of her gifts left.
Next up, we have Scott Gordon, who is going to make a recommendation on ESI appeals process.
Well, good afternoon. So nice to see you all again.
Of course. Thank you for being here.
I thought about going further, decided not to. You've all seen the proposed draft several times now, of amending 91-42-1, which changes two definitions. Since the first day that we've presented that to you, no one has given us specific suggestions for changing either the definition of eligible student or parent, so that hasn't changed. There have, has been one change since last month that we're proposing, to 91-42-4. This was at the suggestion, I believe, of Kathy Bush and others agreed with it. This was on page, I believe it's page 77 of all of your board materials. It is subpoint F, or paragraph F. The bottom of it, we added the language, "Upon remand, the parents or eligible student, the school, and the hearing officer shall receive new written findings of fact from the local school board within 30 days of service of the hearing officer's findings. All rights to an administrative review are renewed upon service of the local school board's new written findings of fact, or upon 30 days from the service of the hearing officer's remand, whichever occurs first." The intent of that change being, just to clarify, that's quite right. Just to clarify, there was a question as to whether or not, you know, if it gets remanded back to the local decision, can a parent still appeal it? Yes, that's the purpose of that.
So Kathy, did that satisfy your concern? Okay, thank you.
I can answer general questions for you, there may be questions that Janet and Laura can answer for you, if you have any.
Well, I, I don't know if we, we've discussed this numerous times, at various meetings. I don't know, I see Sally Cobble has, Sally Cobble.
I'm going to float a motion out there, so we can see one up or down, okay? I so move that at this time, that we do not have an appeal process beyond what our regulations currently state.
Okay, there is a motion not to not go beyond what our regulations currently provide for. You said it better.
At this time, we do not have an appeal process beyond what our regulations currently state. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Janet Waugh. Now we will have discussion. Is there discussion?
Madam Chair, can I just ask a question? So the administrative review, Scott, 91-42-4 has not been passed.
That's correct. That is not part of the current regulations.
So if this motion were to pass, there would not be an administrative review.
There would be one.
There would not be an administrative review of any kind, that is currently in the
That's not what I meant.
That's why I raised the question.
Yes, Janet, that is not what I meant. I liked what we had, the addition to the regulation.
You like what's in here.
Yes.
So what's in your board packet is 91-42-4, are the administrative review-proposed regulations that have been discussed, and have evolved over the last several months, and that's what was presented to you in the board packet?
So Sally, your motion was not to accept that regulation?
That's the way it was worded. Or that was, that was not the way it was worded, that would have been the outcome, would have been, because you said you didn't want any regula, you didn't want any appeal beyond what was currently in the regs.
I think I moved my motion right, Mark. I, I feel as if, at this time, we do not have enough data to see if we need an appeals process beyond what we have, and that it doesn't mean down the line, we can't do this later, but I currently do not feel like we have enough data to know if we need a further. Plus that, I don't really want to be, or put the department in the position of setting a precedence to be an appeal process over the local boards. Now that's why I moved the motion. So now, am I stating what I want by that motion?
I would just state again, that there is no current administrative review process in the regulations that have already been approved by this board, and have gone through the process.
But there's local.
Right.
But there's local.
If I may clarify, because the word "appeal" gets thrown around a lot, there, currently, there is no appeal. There is a complaint that can be raised to the local board, that already exists. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that there's no appeal, there's the complaint process to the local board.
Right, and then if the parent isn't happy with the local board, and whatever, they always have the right to an attorney.
So Scott, what you're saying is, at the local level, it's not called an appeal, it's called a complaint process?
Yes.
Right? It is not an appeal. I had a misconception on that, that at the local level, it was an appeal.
You can appeal to your local board to make a decision, but really, that's the complaint. So that's why we try to use consistent language. When you're dealing with the local level, it's the complaint, kind of the first court, if you will. Appeals don't happen until you go to the next entity up, which would be you.
So Peggy, would you read Sally's motion again, so we can be sure that it says what she thought it said?
She moves at this time to not have an appeal process beyond what our regulations currently state.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
You sure can.
Would that be the same as voting down what's on the?
I think so.
Yes.
What, what motion?
I, I'll tell you what I mean. I mean, I mean that we asked CAC, if we had an appeal process, what would it look like? And they brought us this. I am saying that after reviewing what that process would be, and after seeing how things have gone, and the lack of data, we don't know if we need a process yet. And so I guess I'm saying what I said.
Would it be better just to say?
Nope.
No, okay.
Well.
There, if, if there is no provision for an appeals process right now, if her motion just said what you said without, beyond what's currently provided for, because it's not provided for.
We have a regulation.
Read it one more time.
Sally moves at this time to not have an appeal process beyond what our regulations currently state.
Period. If we stopped it there, is that clearer? Rather than saying beyond what's provided for, because you said
Through the regulations.
Well, because a regulation doesn't provide for it.
I know.
It's not provided for in the regulation, is it?
No.
You're both saying the same thing two different ways.
Okay.
In my opinion.
All right, so we'll leave, leave the motion the way it was.
Saying the same thing twice.
Okay, that's fine.
So it doesn't matter.
All right, so we have a motion and a second. Now, is there discussion? Oh, I've got to get back to this thing, because I can't. Okay, if you, if you want to make a comment, raise your hand, because this isn't working right now.
Would this help?
Well, I don't know what I did. Okay, Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Does that mean, then, that you would take 91-43-4, that would be removed from?
No, I didn't say anything about removing, changing any of the regulations. I'm just talking about the appeal process.
That's, I think that is the appeal process, isn't it?
You said there wasn't.
If the motion passes, that means I stand up and carry section four out, and we're done.
Yes.
That's what I mean.
That's what I'm asking.
That is exactly what my motion is. It's a very simplicity. It is very simple.
I'm just clarifying what we're really being asked to do.
You've got to remember, simplicity.
Okay, I finally got my screen back. Deana, did you have further questions? Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would respond in terms of Sally's motion, that in the short, in the time we've had in terms of no data, you don't wait until something happens to put the process in place. That's, in its simplest form, appeal processes aren't usually built into a process in anticipation of people doing it, but those occasions do arise. And I feel like, you know, we would, we would be remiss if we didn't have some kind of appeal process. Now, what we've kind of worked on here, and you've, has been recommended to us today, but not in this motion, is the fact that there would be an administrative review. And that administrative review would then make a recommendation to, to the local board that you need to do this or that. And they don't have to do this or that. They would just report to us whether they did this or that. Is that correct?
Yes. And there's, there is actually one thing, Mark and I have chatted about this a little bit, that I feel it's appropriate to clarify.
Okay.
And I can wait until after the discussion of this particular motion.
Is it, is it...
It's pertinent to the way that the regulations, that the proposed regulation is written. Because I want to make sure that I didn't mislead you. There is a statute that calls and allows you, as a state board, to appoint hearing officers whenever there is any kind of case, appeal issue that is required by law to come before you. Licenseur is one of them that we've used as an example. It's a solution of a cooperative agreement.
Sure.
It's another example. Well, the very next statute, and I apologize for not catching this, says if a hearing officer is designated pursuant to that prior statute, then the hearing officer issues an initial order, which shall be reviewed and made final by the state board.
So we're in appeal mode?
So it would be if that's the process that you want to adopt, and you do want to incorporate it to where, really, this is kind of a, literally, we discovered yesterday afternoon. At least potentially, it may be something that need, that may need to come to the state board for you to vote on, whether you accept the findings of a hearing officer. Everything else that you've said, that you've described, is accurate, and that is the intent of ninety-one forty-two fourths. And I understand that that does kind of throw a wrench in the works, if it's, if this is a matter that has to be heard public. There are differing opinions on that, that because the regulation as written does not specifically reference ninety-one four, or seventy-two, I forget the statute number.
Seventy-two, seventy-five, nineteen.
Seventy-five, nineteen. Because there's no reference to that, there's no, we are designating a hearing officer pursuant to this statute, well, if that part doesn't apply, then the next statute doesn't apply, and you all don't have to hear, you don't have to hear about it until it turns out the school's not applying. It's like the next episode of soap.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is this Game of Thrones or what? You know, I find something new out every time. Now, this has been one of the most frustrating things about this process. All of a sudden, you know, and I agree that I don't want to sit and adjudicate a local board's decision. I want to give them support, and I want to give them direction. But I don't want to override, and I never want to sit here at the board and have a vote that X, USD two-five-whatever is, I'm now going to be, you know, not overseeing, but I'm going to be directing in terms of, I don't want to do that.
The only difference that I think that that may cause is instead of the hearing officer signing off on something alone, without you ever seeing it, and sending it off to the involved parties, is that the hearing officer may need to bring it to you and say, "Look, this is what I'm going to tell the school and the parents or the eligible student." That's the difference.
But Scott, that changes the whole idea. It, if this process specifies that we, that a hearing officer is appointed, which is what it was all about, then it sounds like automatically the state board is the final decider. Is that not what you said? I'm confused.
That's one of those that now we have to kind of, I do not want to delay this anymore, but I mean, though, that is a concern, that staff is going to have to figure out if this is approved. That's something that we're going to work on.
Okay.
The next couple of months before we make a final vote on. Not everyone sees, not everyone reads it that way.
Would this be something that, when it's vetted by other, others, they could come back with?
It would not surprise me in the slightest if the Attorney General's office said, "Well, wait a minute, you have this statute that says you can appoint a hearing officer. So where's the part where the findings of the hearing officer go before the state board?" I can easily see that the Attorney General's office would catch that. That's why I bring it to your attention. I don't know if they would say the same thing.
Okay. Any other questions or comments before we vote? Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. You've raised an interesting issue. However, I'm opposed to this whole thing anyway, but I would like to give you my rationale, because I think it's only fair that I tell you why I have the position that I have. First of all, I did do my due diligence, as far as a board member, I felt. I contacted every district, all seventeen of my districts, and every district came back to me and said that we do not need this, that this is a solution looking for a problem. Because there's, there has not ever been, they've never had an appeal that a parent has challenged, and no one has brought one to us that a parent has challenged, and they feel that, they feel if anything, this is creating, that, that the ESI regulations we currently have in place are creating a better climate in the schools for behavior, handling children's behaviors. They're working harder on making sure they have positive behaviors in the systems. So therefore, they feel that the original ESI regulations that we currently have are doing a really good job. This was the comments I received back from the people that I contact, like I say, all seventeen districts and various people. Secondly, of course, one of my big concerns, as I stated before, is I served as a local board member for many, many years, and I'm a strong advocate of local control. I feel we're opening Pandora's Box if we do this, because what's to stop us from having a parent whose child is expelled wanting to appeal that to us? Then that's where we kind of, once we, once you open the door, you kind of gotta, we have no excuse for not opening other doors. And so to me, this is an appeal, it's different than an appeal for licensure. This is an appeal by a parent for the actions of a local district. The, the parents also have other opportunities besides an attorney. If they feel that child was abused, they can go to Child Protective Services and file a complaint, and they can do something in the district if it was that severe. I think there's other means they could go to also without having to hire an attorney. So anyway, I just wanted to give you my rationale for not supporting it, and I would hope, you know, I just wanted to tell you that. Thank you so much.
Deana Horst.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, I too have heard from a number of my districts much in the same vein, but we've also heard from some parents with written information that some things may have been going on in a district, and I think we may have fixed some of those, but, some of those But my concern is that those individuals will still be talking to legislators. And are we in charge, or are we going to be told that we have to do such? And that's one of my concerns. So just some comment from perhaps more of our legal representation, that whether we risk being told via statute that we will come up with an appeal process. And it's taking, in a sense, what has been our responsibility. As a legislator, former legislator, I remember this being an issue ten years ago. So it's been around for a long time. And so that's kind of a concern that I have, that I'll listen and hear what everyone else has to say. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This new information kind of throws a real wrench in it for me. And I guess I'd like, I mean, it makes it very difficult for me, one way or the other, on this, quite frankly. I know we have a motion on the table, so we either have to vote on that or something.
Tap it.
Yeah, it could be tapped, yes. But, you know, I, and I've said this, I think, you know, our teachers, our administrators, our educators in our buildings are doing the best that they can, and I think most of them, you know, they don't want to do wrong by kids or do wrong by parents, absolutely. And I do think, I agree, I think these regulations have made a difference as far as focusing on positive behavior supports, doing a lot of things differently in our schools, and I think it has begun to change the culture. However, I also have worked long enough in schools to know that there are things that come up, that it might be helpful to have, and I'm not going to say appeal, to have an administrative review. The thing that I was, had a favorable opinion of this process until we just heard this last little bit, was that it would then provide, I think it was technical assistance back to the school, I'm not sure if that was the correct term, is that, I have that, technical assistance then back to the school, which I think, again, is a positive way to deal with this. I'm, like I think others have said, I am not at all about overruling a local school board's decision. I don't think that's the role that we have here at the State Board of Education. I certainly want to recognize their right to run their school districts and their boards as they need to and make their decisions. I am about providing support and providing whatever assistance that we can, and also helping parents and students if they feel like they have an issue that does not seem to be resolved, able to be resolved. And again, I like the technical support kind of thing, so if we can get to that without the board having to vote yea or nay on a local person, board's decision, I don't think, I don't think we should go there. I personally don't want to go there. So I am concerned that we may need, as much as I hate to put this off, we may need more clarification on this.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Yes, Scott.
I think it's completely defensible legally if the board were to just explain, "No, we do not want to be the entity that makes a final decision. We're not appointing a hearing officer pursuant to this particular statute. We are appointing a hearing officer under a different regulation, so we don't have to review the initial orders before they're sent." There is absolutely no case law on these particular statutes. You can come back next month, and I don't think I'm going to have any better clarification for you or any more information for you next month, or six months, or two years from now. So you can delay, do whatever you want. I'm just, I only let you know that that statute exists. And someone may try to point a finger and saying, "No, no, that's not how the process is supposed to work." If that's not how you want the process to work, that's what won't happen. But someone may look at it outside of this building and say, "Well, that's how it's supposed to happen." So if you don't want to be the body that reviews the initial orders before they are delivered, and we've never phrased them as initial orders for what it's worth, I don't, I think it's just findings and suggested corrective action and technical assistance that we offer. So no, I didn't mean to imply that, "Nope, this is it. This is absolutely what the law means." It's somewhat up to interpretation as the board. If you want to interpret it as, "No, we don't have to review this, there doesn't have to be an initial order." That's what we'll do.
Well, and I, as I say, I'm supportive of the technical assistance component. I don't feel like we're going to have a lot of these, quite frankly. However, I'm not so certain that we don't need an opt, that option for parents should the need arise. So if this particular ninety-one forty-two four gets to that and provide the technical assistance, I'm supportive of that with this addition that we've added in there. I am supportive of that.
And our attorney, I asked him if he had a comment, and he did, so I'm going to ask Mark Ferguson to weigh in on this issue.
Only that I think it further complicates it, because Scott and I don't necessarily agree about that interpretation. He raised that, and it's, it's my opinion that that statute does not apply to this ESI complaint policy, because that's not something that is normally required by law to be decided by the board. And the way the, the regulations are currently proposed is written, it's something that you can delegate. I think that particular statute applies when you have, the Board of Education is, is the ultimate decider, for example, on licensure, and you, and it permits the Board of Education to, to delegate the, the hearing, and in some cases, those licensure hearings are very long and drawn out, and basically just says that the, the state board then has to be, approve the initial order as a final order. So, I mean, it did come up to you today, and as, as a last-minute, you know, change or clarification, I think he's wise to bring that up, that that's, that's a potential. Didn't want you to go forward without him expressing his concern that that could be interpreted that way, but to further complicate things, we don't necessarily agree that that would require, that that statute would require you to make the final approval of the hearing officer's findings.
Thank you, Mark. Jim McNeese.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Well, Scott, I owe you an apology and a commendation at the same time. Sorry, I sounded frustrated in my sarcasm about showing up with this information at the last minute. It was uncalled for. Thanks for doing that. It's important to do. That said, I also want to say, you know, to the board, and Janet in particular, I appreciate the fact that you went to that extra effort. I've been visiting districts, you know, and almost, I don't have to bring it up. They bring it up for me, you know, in, in various ways, some of which we haven't talked about today. But one of the things that, that comes up is the same that, that you recognized in our districts, and that is that this policy, new regulations, excuse me, new regulations have indeed had a very significant impact on, on districts and how they're approaching positive behaviors, you know, de-escalation, and so on. And the training has been, been very, very helpful in, in other ways, and bullying and such. I've heard other comments that were related to this that were never intended. But I can also remember, two years ago, when we started this, all the feedback I got from the districts was basically, "We don't want this. We don't need it. We don't have a problem." And now they're saying it's, you know, this is pretty good, you know, and, in fact, far better than I ever anticipated. You know, I was with one district the other day that last year was, you know, probably the biggest advocate opposed to, not advocate, but opposed to this, and now is saying, "We've got some problems with it, but it's working out really..." And now is saying, we've got some problems with it, but it's working out really better than we thought. And I'd like to think, as Kathy mentioned, you know, that we have this, as we've been describing it, recommended appeals policy. And it gives us some opportunity as a board to say that, you know, we can establish protocols that allow for, you know, resolution and assistance to the districts, especially in a time of need. Kind of like a referee, you know, we're not, we don't want to interfere with their responsibilities or their tasks, but sometimes you need somebody to say, you know, guys, you need to look at it a little differently, you know, and beyond just, did you have a policy or not? Because I know we haven't gotten the report, but we've seen the numbers in terms of, the districts are complying with this in a huge fashion, even though it wasn't what they wanted. They weren't looking for it, they weren't asking for it. We were. So the bottom line is this, is that, yeah, I'm a little concerned that the, we've got this new wrinkle about possibly coming in, but we have one lawyer standing and one lawyer sitting, and surprising to me, they don't necessarily agree. But that's why we have it vetted by others, so they can tell us if it works or not, you know, in a more deliberate fashion and with, and I don't mean this in any way to demean your positions, but from a position of their responsibility, which is they're refereeing us. You know, those are my terms, not, you know, legal terms. And I wouldn't mind hearing from them about, is this going to work? Because actually, these don't go into effect until after all of that vetting process, the open forum, and then we vote on them a year from now. So the actual decision is a year from now, or more, eight months to a year, that we'll actually be facing this, when it goes through that process and we have the, go through all the stages of that. I don't remember which, and what's that take, eight months?
At a bare minimum, I would say.
Eight months to a year. So we'll be back here, eight months to a year, with the input from the Attorney General and others that will, and the public on hearings and so on. We'll hear from CAC, we'll hear from the Disability Rights Group, we'll hear from parents, we'll hear from people about, you know, what they believe. So it isn't solved today. And if you want to put it off for another day, it's going to, this thing is going to be with us for as long as we want it to be. I'd like to see the process continue, and if we do Sally's, the process doesn't continue, it just stops right here. So I'd like to see the process continue and not have to make that definitive statement today of not going further, you know, and just so you know where I'm standing, you know. Because I am, the one thing that I will never do is set us up as a board to adjudicate local board decisions. That's not our role, you know. But on the other hand, we're also here to oversee and to provide technical assistance and support, you know, and support doesn't always mean that we agree with them, you know, and, but I'd never want to do that. And I think it's unconstitutional, and I think it's unethical of us to do that. Thank you.
Carolyn Campbell.
Thank you, ma'am. Well, February 2013 is when this all started. I had a family that I visited with that had a concern. All I ever really wanted was to have something in place so that was dissatisfied with the outcome, had concerns. All I ever really wanted was just a simple mechanism for them to be able, when they were not satisfied with what had happened at their local district, that there would be somebody here that could just look it over and then send whatever, you know, advice, assistance that they could do. There was, there's more to this one situation that I'm not going to get into, that in the end, they still felt like they were not heard. So I want something, I respect our teachers, our special ed educators especially for all that they do. I respect the agency here. But I feel I'm supportive of a quote "administrative review" of some type. I don't want any more money have to be spent, I don't want to have any, I always thought that one person here in this building, when we got this case, could review it, and it wouldn't be that big of a complicated situation. And I know there's not going to be that many. Interestingly enough, this summer, a district that I, another, a different district that I represent, a parent called me with a concern, sort of the same problems. Well, they took their child out of the one district and put it somewhere else. I don't think a family should have to do that if they're so totally dissatisfied with, you know, the final outcome. So, and I respect the folks that I work with around this table, but to just leave it as it is, I cannot support this motion. I'd like for us to try to work something, so the, and it's not going to be that many. If it's only two a year, or one a year, that they have, they ought to have a mechanism that they can come beyond the school district.
Carolyn, I have a motto that I adopted years ago when we were trying to remodel an older home. And that model, or that motto was, nothing is simple. And we have certainly found out that that is true in this event. And I agree with you. You know, we wanted something simple. It has become so complicated because of different legal opinions, different views, other issues. And so, you know, it has grown and taken on a life of its own. But at this point in time, we do have a motion on the floor. I would like to see us go ahead and vote on that motion and then move forward, you know, to see if we can get some resolution here. Does anyone have anything really they would like, any opinions they would like to voice before we vote on the motion? No? Okay. Then read the motion one more time. Peggy.
Sally moves at this time to not have an appeal process beyond what our regulations currently state.
Okay. All in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Okay, that's three. Opposed to the motion. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven opposed. Do you need the names, Peggy?
Absolutely, yes.
Opposed by Kathy Bush, Jim McNeese, Deana Horst, Carolyn Campbell, John Bacon, Ken Willard, and Steve Roberts. Okay, now, we can move forward and ask if there is a motion to put before the board. Jim McNeese.
I would move that we accept the recommended motion provided by staff. It's moved that the Kansas State Board of Education approve the submission of the amendment to the Emergency Safety Intervention Regulations, KAR 9142-1, and KAR 91-42-4 to the Department of Administration and the Office of the Attorney General for review.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by Carolyn Campbell. Is there further discussion? Sally Cobble.
Point of clarification, that is as with the red part in there that was Kathy's recommendation. Is that what you mean, Jim?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, thank you.
So is there further discussion? John Bacon.
If we need to get to that detail at this point, but it says it's going to be a staff person here at the department. Is, I mean, we've had a subcontractor do our hearings for special ed for years, and it's not necessarily a staff person here. So I didn't know if that language is general or if that's very specific. And so I didn't know if that would always fit, especially if we've only got one case a year, Carol. We don't need somebody on staff to be doing that. We could easily hire an outside person that's retired or somebody like that to handle this. So I didn't know, I didn't like that specific language. And I don't know if now's the time to change that or look at that, or if we'll have an opportunity to change that through this hearing process, or through the public.
If I may, that would be a pretty substantial change to make after public hearings. The reason why the language is in there is, well, candidly, this statute says it. That 7519 statute that I referenced before says that if there is a matter that is to come before you, and I believe that this would be a matter that the law would require to come before you if you pass this regulation, then you shall appoint a member of staff at KSDE. The hearings that you're referring to don't require the matter to come before the State Board of Education. That's why you're able to hire somebody that's a subcontractor. But the statute says that if it's a matter that is required, and it's not required today, but if you adopt 9142-4, the first subsection A is, who filed a complaint with a local board of education pursuant to 9142-2 may request an administrative review by the Kansas State Board of Education. So if it's going to be a review conducted by you, in my opinion, that's why you have staffed it.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it would please the board, I would volunteer to be the hearing officer at such time.
I think it refers to staff member, doesn't it?
Yes.
But thank you. Ken Willard.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Back in August, Scott told us that the regulation only requires that a school district must have a policy. So in regards to an appeals process, as long as a local school district has a policy, they will not lose their appeal. The way the regulation is written, the only way there's a violation of the regulation is if the school district does not do the reporting properly. So my question is, if this regulation is adopted, if this appeals process is adopted as part of this regulation, does that statement still stand?
May I respond? No. The comments that you're referencing, and I understand they've been shared with you by other individuals, are...
I was here.
Well, out of context. That was referencing a draft of the reg, red draft of an appeal that says you could appeal whether or not the school district was in violation of the regulation. Well, the regulation as it was written at the time, you're right, just called for the policy. That's why subsection B of 42-4 specifically shows what can be appealed. It strengthens the regulations, in my opinion, at, under 42-4. I'm looking on page 75 of your board packets, it's the very first subsection of the administrative review. So you could lose an appeal if any of these things are true. That's why it was specifically written that way, as opposed to the first two drafts that were shared with you. I don't know if that helped answer your question or not.
Are there other questions? We do have a motion and a second. Are we ready to vote? All in favor of the motion, raise your right hand. Those opposed, raise your right hand. So the motion carries eight to two with Willard and Waugh in opposition. Thank you.
What happened?
We're on the same side.
What happened?
See? There were seats.
All right, Scott, thank you for all that you've done on this issue, the discussion. Thank you, Jenna and Colleen.
And Jenna, thank you for your...
Thanks. Okay, is Dale around or is he?
Right here.
Okay, well, let's go ahead with our legislative matters and then we'll take a break.
Do you want to make that motion? I thought that's what was going to happen today.
Couple, three things I wanted to share.
Well, it's not going to go anywhere.
One is...
Well, he changed after this. Preparation with the Board of Regents, Board of Regents got, had the money appropriated by the legislature, and we've got a contract now with the company, and they will be providing training and licenses for all school districts to, where students can take a Microsoft test and receive a certificate at no cost, no cost. Board of Regents got the appropriation, but it affected our kids, so we were involved in it, our folks were. And the training, there'll be a training tomorrow for folks from service centers, and part of their little agreement, they've got to go visit every school district in their service center area, or talk to them, review it with them. And it kicks in right at the 1st of January. But it's really a cool deal, because any poor kid that wants to go take a Microsoft test, and there will be a license in every county. And any big district will have a license. And we believe that also, that like a county has, well, let's take a district that's got a license, take Seaman out here, he's got a license. Well, a better one would be Topeka. They got a license, I don't know why they couldn't transport that from one building to the other for assessment. It'd be cheaper and easier to take that person, whoever's got the license and so forth, in the system to give the assessment and so forth. And so anyway, it's kind of exciting, and I think the schools are pretty excited about it. And I tell you the other thing, it may force a little bit. There'll be some schools that may not offer different Microsoft programs, and there's going to be pressure kind of to offer those because the kids want them. With me? It'll grow, it'll be gradual, it'll be gradual. And in some of the very big districts, like Wichita, they may get two licenses because they got 11% of the enrollment. So anyway, that's moving. The training session is tomorrow here in Topeka, Board of Regents' office, but we're excited about it. And our folks were using a little dab of leadership money in Carl Perkins that we have that helped pay for the service centers to help do the training locally, because we just, we didn't have the money or the...
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Could I ask a question?
Sure.
Dale, in terms of dollars, what does a test cost the students if they had to pay for, they or the school district had to pay for it?
They had to pay for it? I don't know, somebody else may know that better than I do. I mean, like, I've heard, what, $175? Something like it. It's not cheap if you don't have any money.
Well, it's not cheap.
You with me? Kathy, you know, I've heard in that vicinity, you guys may also know, it's in that vicinity, $175, and different tests, different amounts. But anyway, we're kind of excited about that, and the other thing I want to share...
Where'd the money come from?
Pardon?
Where did the money come from?
It was a $500,000 appropriation. They didn't think we could do this. They didn't think it could stretch it that far, that we could get a license in every county and every high school kid can take it without a cost. And the money is a general fund appropriation to the Board of Regents.
So it was money from the general fund, and it went to the Board of Regents, and the Board of Regents is doing it, or it's covering their costs? the border regions is doing it or it's covering their costs and our costs?
There's a little history to that that we won't, no need to talk about it right here, but the, the bottom line, it, it ended up in the border regions, and it wasn't something that they asked for. But they didn't ask for the money, they got it. And so we worked with them. They've been great to work with, Blake Flanders and...
Oh, sure.
They've been great to work with. We're just thrilled to death that we can do this because a lot of districts with high poverty, this big time, and the private schools, if they want to go over to the public school and take the test, they can. We believe, we believe they can do it under that. So anyway, we're excited about that. The training takes place tomorrow, and in the next two, three weeks after that, they'll be meeting with local school districts and try to inform them of what's going on. And a lot of the service centers will do it at a regular meeting, but there'll be, we got a map, all drawn out, and this map, they got to cover everybody within that certain, those counties. They got to make sure they're, they make contact.
Madam Chair?
Do you have an extra copy of what this is going to be?
Sure do. I think Denise took two.
Madam Chair?
Yeah, Ken, Ken Willard.
Dale, when a student takes one of these tests, does it result at least sometimes in a, in a certification?
Yes, that, that's the purpose of it.
Okay.
You take the test, you get the certification, and the theory behind it is that'll open up an opportunity for continual growth, but also for jobs.
And these certifications, are they approved under the seat, Senate bill fuck?
Some would be, some may not be, but they'll still get the certification.
Okay.
They wouldn't all be.
And those that are, would, the school would get the $1,000?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Now, what, we got 30 seconds, and we'll do within our, our time limit, but we, we had a, we kind of had an exciting thing happening. If I've told you this, well, you stopped me, but we was reviewing about the problems. I think there's a potential teacher shortage coming down the road and all this because the number going into teacher edge down. But anyway, we was kind of going through that, and Cindy Lane in Orkans City said she had a student, a bright kid, senior, graduated and was very good in technology, and applied for a job over at Cerner. You know, right there, you know, on the legends, and they, they hired him, kid just out of high school, $50,000. And that's, that was probably more than his teacher was making. They taught him M.C.C.K. Yep, so, but anyway, it was, it was, Cindy was telling us that, and we, it was, it was interesting story. The memo we're giving you right now is today, come out about two to three hours ago, that shows the, the governor's proposed allotment plans, and bottom line, you see footnotes, askers there. That means it takes legislative actions on that chart. You need to look at the chart, and you'll see where down there, we have to cut $229,872. It does not, it did not, there's no cuts to local school districts as far as flow-through money, state aid to them. But that's, that's the governor's proposal, but it will take legislative action on those where there is askers. That's, that's maybe funds that are other than state general fund. I just thought you ought to have that to look at it, study it. We'll, we get our money, we'll have to do it, put nearby attrition, and we'll do that. The big, the commissioner's vacancy, that'll get part of it, a good chunk of it, and the rest of it is to be vacancies where positions we can't fill. And we'll, we have, we have trouble filling IT positions. The salaries don't compensate equal to the private sector, so we may pick up some there. Not on purpose, but we will. You can take a look at it. That'll be good, yeah.
Dale Dina Horst had a question. And my question is really back on the Microsoft Academy program. You talked about training. Are you training the trainers?
We're, we're going to try to train some folks in seven regional service centers, and then they, as a part of a little mini contract, they have to go out to make sure all the people in their service area that they've been assigned is aware and knows about the program, what it is, and what they need to do, where the license will be located, and things like that. And then, then they'll also probably have follow-up with the, with the teachers.
Okay.
But see, there's, there's no way we could do that with no money.
I was, I was just trying to figure out how, how it was structured.
There's no secret. What we did, we found, we had a little bit of Carl Perkins money, and we gave each one of them $5,000 and convinced them it was a great way to serve. So...
Looks good.
They're not going to get, they aren't going to make anything out of it, but they'll get to meet with their constituents, and I, I think they'll appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss this.
Thank you. Janet Waugh had a question too, Dale.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Dale, my question is about this CAPERS cut. You're saying they're not cutting education, but I thought they put the CAPERS money in the education budget last year, that that was counted as education money, and they were using that base, they were using that to, to count how much per student it was costing us.
If you cut CAPERS, what you do is you just move, move it down the road a little ways. You with me?
Uh huh.
So, and if we were, I think we were scheduled to have it actuarially sound in 2033, this may move it down the road another year, six months, whatever. That's what, and so it's, that appropriation is, what's the amount here?
Forty million.
Forty million?
Yeah.
That appropriation is just for us. That'll count the rest of state government, but the appropriation for us for this year is 403. So it's only about 10% of our share. And see, this could be all the state government, which I think it is.
Okay.
All the state government, not just us.
I lost my...
Sally Cobble.
Yeah, it is, just a delay.
Everything after that 4% reduction of cabinet level, right in here, that isn't a certain percentage of anybody's budget to where we're all cut the same, or is that they just went through and decided?
Well, it's a general rule what it is. It's, they say 4%, but what it is, it's 2% of the total for this year and 2% more next year.
So this is two-year?
So it's, it's a two-year, yeah. The 4%, 4% is split over this year and next year.
So the state library got to cut 2%, and we got to, so everybody in this column was 2%?
Well, that, I think that's the intent and purpose based upon the heading up at the top. It's 4%, but they took 4% for this, but it's only half the year. It's 4% for half the year.
I got it.
So if you take the whole year, it's 2%, and then we got to get the 2, 29,872, then we'll have a similar amount in next year cut.
Did you say a similar amount cut next year?
Yes, ma'am, I did.
So the 20 general's budget is 140 times the Secretary of State's budget? What it looks like?
It's because of the way they...
Well, these, the, I was trying to see here...
I'm just looking at the disparity between 30 general and secretary of state. I just didn't think there'd be that much disparity.
See, the other thing you got to look at when you, when you look at those is a lot of those agencies have fee funds, a lot of fee funds. And the fee funds, so they manage, for example, the Department of Labor, they get very little general fund money, it's primarily federal money or fee money. So it, it depends on the agency. We're about, oh, around numbers, we're about 50% federal and fee funds and, and like licensure, and we're about 50% general fund. But what they're cutting here is general fund. So when you get ready, when we have to do the cutting, you have to be, you have to be careful when you do that, and our intent's not to release anybody because we'll try, we tried to plan that at the beginning of the year because you see this kind of seed coming. But half the agency is not affected by this. Those in teacher licensure that are paid with fee funds, those on federal funds, so you got the half, the other half is where that's got to come out of. You, you may, somebody may say, well, so-and-so's leaving. They say, oh gee, we'll pick up some, we'll pick up some money, and well, they're federally funded. Don't help any. Don't help any. So.
Janet, Janet, come in. Oh, okay. Janet Waugh.
Thanks, thanks, Madam Chair. I, I was just going to ask, okay, the second part you're saying is the 4%, but what about that top part? Are those fund transfers? Was that, was that a percentage? Or was that just, well, just, okay, you got this much too much?
No, no, no. That's a judgment call on what they believe is available for this purpose.
That's what they feel, believe.
Judgment, mhm. Judgment call.
Well, you know, I've always heard about the state highway fund being a, a kind of a savings account that they just borrow from all the time. How far can they go on that thing? Are we going to just have rut holes? Ruts, you know what?
It's like I said, it's a judgment call. I mean, it really is. It's a judgment call. There's a lot of money in, in highway fund, but I, I know there's lots of pressure to make sure we comply with the plan that was put together. And I know that was, I think that's the intent. Anyway, this, what we're giving you now is just the, the agenda for the K-12 commission that's coming up. That is Brad, what, next Monday?
Monday.
Monday, so. Anyway, Madam Chair, I, I think I've told you more than I know a little bit, but, because see, this just came out not very long ago, and, and you get, you just have to go through and analyze it and try to understand the best you can, so.
Well, thank you.
But the schools were not cut in flow-through money. As such, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Well, then, I said we would take a break after that. Let's take a break until 20 after. That's like seven minutes.
You're generous. You're getting generous.
Okay, 10 minutes. Let's, let's go to 25 after. Well, it looks like our 12 minutes is up, so we'll resume our meeting with a communications committee update. Are we hearing from Jim or Sally or both?
Jim, until we leave something out.
Jim?
Jim. Okay, well, thank you. And as I catch my breath here, one of the things that happened this morning was our recognition of the Blue Ribbon Award winners, and we listened to them tell us about their, tell us their story, and what a great story it is. So obviously, that's tied into a number of initiatives that, that we would like to do in terms of communication. And one of the recommendations I'd have is, as we communicate this, is to communicate to the legislative representatives from their districts and a information and congratulations on the Blue Ribbon School selections in their area, and encourage them to visit their schools that received the Blue Ribbon. I know several have, but I don't know if everyone has. You know, I was at Kingman, and I've also visited Hayesville, and it's a, it's, it's a really good experience to visit and one that I, I think we should encourage. So that's, Madam Chair, if that's something we could direct Peggy to do, is to communicate with the legislatures from those districts that had Blue Ribbon schools, encourage, congratulating the schools, encouraging them to contact the principals of those schools to learn the story that's so wonderful about what they've done.
Great.
Okay. Second is, in your packet, there are a calendar of events for this next year coming up beginning in January. You know, such items, you know, as the scholar, the Governor's Scholars Award Program, Exemplary Educators Network, you know, things that you can look at in your calendars, and your participation in many of these is, is always encouraged. And just so you can have them on your calendars, on your kind of watch list, I'm kind of a calendar person, so just a heads up on that. Also in your packet is our, one of our famous postcards, and as it says, Kansas College and Career Ready. It's, that's, that's what the front will look like, okay, as you look at it. And on the reverse of the card is our own new commissioner. And Dr. Watson would be the first one featured on there, and, and that's a great thing to share and celebrate. So that's kind of what the cards will look like. And then in your packet is also a listing by dates of what we are anticipating and building on these cards. We're trying to include in the cards actual pictures of students from around our state, and that's, that's a little bit of a challenge, you know, to get the pictures, to get the authorizations and permissions. So, you know, we'd like to, it, it's just taken us time to do. That's why we don't have them yet. It would be really, last year, we went to stock pictures that are just available to us. This year, we're trying to be, you know, recognize, celebrate, you know, the, the students and schools of our state. So that's one of the things holding us up. Plus, there's pictures for others, you know, the, the Blue Ribbon folks who are here today, the Teachers of the Year, you know, those kinds of things. So Denise and Peggy and, and Sally and I will be working on that, you know, later this week even, you know, to, to finish that up so you can have actual postcards in your hands when we come back in January. And we'll be making them only in, in batches of like four, I believe, you know, we're not going to like print them all for two reasons. One, we probably won't be ready to, and two, we, we want to stay a little bit flexible towards the end especially. You'll see number 12, there is none. We've just kind of saved if there's something comes up, an award, recognition, some information. We'd like to do that. Let's see. I'd like to report to, share with you that I'm, I'm working with Senator Abrams in terms of putting together the February 10th dinner with state board and the Senate and House Ed committees. We're proceeding on that. We do not have a, a place as of yet, but all the other details are falling into place. And invitations will go out to the committee members when we have the committees formed in, in January. And we'll be sending out a more official invitation for them at that time, and should have all of this together by our January, or after, a little bit after our January meeting. Hopefully, I'll know in the January meeting. There's also, we've included in your packet another, again, the information on how to access our website where we have resources that are available to us, how to access that. It's important that you know that because even though we, we received already the printed information about committee assignments on, you know, our different committees that we have serving us, it, it's on the website. You can go to the website and get that. We'll also make sure that the information from the accountability report that we received today is, is on that website for you to access as well. As soon as Brad has the PowerPoint put together, we can put it on that as well. And anything else that you're interested in, if you let Peggy know, we'll make it accessible on that site, easily retrievable for you for presentations and your general information to share with others.
Can I add something?
Certainly.
The, the central access point that Jim was referencing right now doesn't have the committee assignments because those all, all change in January for this group.
I was talking about the committees.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that was clear to them. Like the Professional Practices Commission, who serves on that, the Evaluation Review Committee, the Licenseur Review Committee, all those are posted as we have them right now.
Very good. Thank you for clarifying that. Sally, what else?
I've got a couple of things.
Okay, great, thank you.
I was talking to Brad, so did she just say that, I don't know if you're all aware of it, there's like 12 or 13 committees that help the department, and in the names, they're on, we can get to them by that under the board thing, and you can click on them, and then you can see who all is on those committees. And I don't know about you guys, but I didn't realize that we had so many, you know, we're aware of CAC and Career and Technical Ed, but I didn't, I hear them every month, but I didn't realize what all they were. And so you can see who in your district is helping. Jim, the PowerPoint that Brad slides would be on is just, just the... Jim, the PowerPoint that Brad slides would be on is just, just these two things. He wasn't putting a PowerPoint together of us. I didn't know if you misunderstood.
I, I misunderstood. I thought he was gonna, that would be in a PowerPoint format, but it'll be, it'll be loaded on, either way, it's gonna be loaded on there.
This, if you want, you need a copy of.
You can get a copy, but can't we put it on electronically on our, our resource site?
I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
What I was referring is if there's anything that you want transferred to a PowerPoint slide for you to be able to use, we can do that, too.
Yeah, that'd be great because there are, I'll let you know, because there are slides that I liked on that that I can use that, that are very meaningful. Thank you.
Uh, one other thing Peggy put together for us as we go into January, uh, and you'll find it in your folder and it's got this red stuff on it, like, um, it seems like every two years, we can't remember what's elected, what's appointed and what committees we have. And so you might be wanting to look at that. So next month, when we elect a chairman and, and whatever, you might like to see what committees are in there. And then, uh, Janet, I forgot, uh, after our E, um, ESI, gosh, I can't even remember what it's called now, you know, in which I thought, I guess I got scared because I thought the earth was gonna open and fall in down here on this end of the table, but after that vote, but, um, we have, we have a letter from a legislator that really cared where we were in this process of the ESI and, um, this isn't it, this is Mark's. But I wondered if we could ask Colleen to answer that legislator and, um, respond for us and either you sign it or something on what we are doing, what we have done, so that, um, you know, if he cares enough to send us a letter, I think we ought to care enough to send a reply. Yeah, the one we got it last month. I think we need... I can't remember, you guys, who it was from. Mike Keagle. And I, I'd like to see us reply and maybe, um, Colleen could put it together for us and then you sign it or something. No, we talked about doing it, but I think we decided to wait until we voted today to know what. I can't remember anything else, Jim. Those are the things that I...
That pretty much covers it.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for all that you've done. I'm proud of, of your work. Okay, next, we have a recommendation from the Professional Practices Commission. Scott Gordon's name was down. I didn't know if we knew you could be here, so thank you, Kendall.
Yes, I'm here. The Professional Practices Commission convened on November 17th and reviewed the applications for professional licensure summarized on pages 85 and 86 of, uh, your packet. The exhibits reviewed by the PPC and the subsequent initial orders are attached and comprise pages 87 through 176. There are five, uh, recommendations contained there.
Are there questions about any of the recommendations? Questions or motion? Sally moved. Jim seconded the motion to adopt the findings of the Professional Practices Commission. Gee, that was easy. All, oh, is there a discussion? Okay, there being none, all in favor, raise your right hand. So it's unanimous that we will adopt the findings of the PPC. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I did. And it's worth it.
Uh, next on our agenda is approval of the Consent Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the Consent Agenda? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Jim McNeese. All in favor, raise your hand. Okay. Ken, was your hand up or are you obs... Okay, so we have a unanimous vote on that. Okay. Uh, next, we have Board Reports. And the two things that I wanted you to note in your folders would be, uh, the invitations for the two January events, the SEAC Breakfast and the Luncheon with the Students. Be sure that you find those so you know when that is. Uh, there's a memo with details on the swearing-in ceremony. Invitations are to be mailed soon. Peggy will be collecting reservations and names of guests to submit to the Planning Committee. Do they need to notify you before the next board meeting or is that soon enough? Okay, you'll probably be sending out a reminder email. Okay, that's good. Yeah, Sally.
Yeah, can you predict the weather? Peggy, do you know if on the, um, it was the Saturday date, I can't find that list. The gala. Okay, I have two questions. One, is there going to be a, um, what's that called when we all walk in? Grand march. Are we included in that? And... Okay, so therefore, we need to buy tickets to the, the ball. Okay, so we don't need to tell you that. We just need to tell you for the swearing-in. I don't think I'm gonna drive to Topeka and back to Wichita and back there.
And then, uh, in your packet is a 2015 list of special events from the staff and I was to remind you about that. Are there any questions about your packet or anything that, uh, is not there that you think you need? Okay, uh, we'll have our Board Attorneys report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It was a pretty busy, uh, November and start to December. Um, I gave, sent out a couple of memos last week. One was an update on the Petrella Appeal before the Kansas, or the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals in Denver and tried to highlight for you some of the, the arguments that were presented there and summarize that argument. Also then, gave you a copy of the 37-page opinion in the Cope lawsuit, which is the Science Standards, the Challenge by the Citizens for Objective Public Education versus the State Board of Education and the agency regarding the science standards and the, uh, decision by the newly-appointed, uh, federal judge, Dan Crabtree, who dismissed that lawsuit last week. More recently, uh, and I didn't get that out until yesterday, but there was, there's a, um, lawsuit filed by, uh, Mr. Putz related to the, uh, Putz related to the, um, uh, licensure, um, that the, the board revoked his licensure and that's an Administrative, um, Procedures Act, uh, appeal to the District Court in Shawnee County. And that was, uh, filed recently and I sent you a summary of that and a copy of the petition. Then I have my standard monthly report, so be happy to answer any specific questions on any of those matters.
Steve Roberts.
I apologize for my ignorance here. Mark, did you send us the Cope thing electronically or is it?
Uh, I did. That came out on Thursday, December 4th. I can resend it to you if, for some reason, it didn't get through.
Thank you.
Mark, did you say he dismissed the lawsuit?
Yes.
That's the bottom line.
You're right.
Okay, thank you. Other questions for Mark? All right, uh, committee reports. We've had our Communications Committee. Is there any other committee that has been hard at work that I don't know about? Sally.
Well, in talking about policy, we, um, Janet and I, after we reviewed or evaluated our secretary and attorney, we asked them to go back and maybe cross out and revise their evaluation forms to where what we're asking them to do actually meets and that, um, they have done that and policy, we thought maybe it would be a good idea to send it through the Policy Committee. Next year's Policy. Next year's Policy Committee. But if, we all need to hear that, so whomever ends up on that realizes that's coming through.
I wanted to thank Peggy and Mark for getting that done for us. Well, we are ready for individual board member reports. We'll start down here with Steve.
Uh, thank you. My wife and I were privileged to go to New Orleans for a week and I had a meeting scheduled in Baton Rouge with, um, uh, the Director of, of Talent, something, and Talent is in her title. There wasn't that much that we were able to do in a one-hour meeting. It's, it was interesting to see how some of their, uh, board members are elected and some are appointed. They have a, a blend down there in, in Louisiana. Uh, one thing that, that is a trend in Louisiana is that the, the unions are not as, um, strong as they used to be. And that's, that's one of the things that's happening in Louisiana. I also had a meeting with, uh, Scott McWilliams, who's the Executive Director of Human Resources in the Blue Valley School District, along with a gentleman who represented, uh, the Gallup Organization, because I wanted to investigate if there was any racial component to the, um, Teacher Insight Survey. And what I found out was indeed, they, they, they keep some track of, uh, racial statistics, but it's only for statistical purposes. Uh, it's clear to me that there are no decisions based on race. At least, at least that's, uh, that's their claim. I have no reason to dispute that, so I don't think there's any, um, merit to, uh, pursue any, anything along those lines. I would, though, like this board to consider, uh, racial issues next year and I, I, I hope we can talk about it in open and free fashion next year. Uh, the Professional Standards Board, in which I've been privileged to serve for two years, uh, I wasn't able to attend, but I believe Carolyn was able to go in my stead and so I'll leave that for Carolyn to address. Thank you.
Thank you. Ken Willard.
I sent to you, all of you, an email today. You haven't had a time to see it, I'm sure. But it is, um, a link that takes you to, uh, the keynote presentations and some of the other presentations that are all videoed. I, I got to go to a conference last month that I, I got comped. I mean, I got a scholarship for it, so it covered my travel and my hotel and everything. But it was a conference, uh, put on by the Ex, the Foundation for Excellence in Education and it was a national summit on education reform issues. Uh, it, it was just very fascinating. Uh, so what I've sent to you is not just saying that I agree with everything that's in there, but it was very informative and, uh, educational for me. Uh, and, and to see that we're doing many of the reform things, we're at least approaching them in Kansas that, that are believed to be powerful movers. And there were presentations, um, on, um, one was a forum that was, um, a panel with Condoleezza Rice and Senator Mark Rubio that was, that was moderated by Juan, uh, Juan Williams. That was fascinating. The title of it was, um, uh, something about, uh, 60 years since Brown versus Board and it was the, the, um, uh, quality education is a civil rights issue of, of our day. So it was very, very well done. There were just great presentations. I would encourage you to look at them. They're, they're kind of lengthy, but if you just want something to really be interesting and stimulating. I was the only Kansan there. There were nine, over 900 people there from 47 states and four countries. This, uh, conference first began seven years ago and there were only three states represented at that time. But it is really growing and there's a lot of momentum about, behind doing some things differently that we've been talking about around this horseshoe for quite a long time. And, um, the career technical education piece was, was, was a part of it. There was a fascinating presentation by a guy who was the founder of Ted Talks, if you are familiar with Ted Talks. He founded that organization and he, and, and he gave a presentation that made a powerful argument for the fact that there's no better way to engage some students and find out what they know and have them present it to you than by doing it in a video presentation. And, because they get an audience that could go viral, you know, on, on YouTube. So it was really fascinating. I would love to have had some policymaker, the, the people there were state board members. I ran into several state board members from NASB states around the country. Uh, there were several, a lot of legislators there. There were Board of Regents types of people and there were, um, uh, uh, Commissioners of Education from around the state. So it was a really big deal and I don't know how I've never heard about it, but I've heard about it actually from a nephew of mine who's, um, is the Chief of Staff for a state senator in Missouri. And he had an opportunity to go last year and after he went, he called me and said, "Man, I think you'd like this." And he said, "I might be able to get you a scholarship." So the next thing I know, I got this application in the mail, I completed it and got a scholarship for it. And, uh, I think because I was, um, an elected, uh, person, many of the people there were not, well, one of the questions on the application is, are you, do you hold an elected office or are you in a campaign? And my answer to that was yes. So I don't know if that was the reason or not, but I received an invitation right before I went to go to, um, reception at the home of the British Ambassador, which was a fascinating thing as well. And there were lots of state board members that were at that, at that event. And it just so happens, and I didn't realize this, that we're working in very close partnership with, with the, uh, UK on some school reform issues in this country. So it was very, it was very good and so maybe I can get some scholarships available for some people next year. Next year will be held in Denver. This time it was in DC, but it'll be in Denver next year. And if you have an opportunity to go, I think it'd certainly be well worth your time. So, that's it.
John Bacon.
Thank you. Real quick, uh, this morning, when I abstained from our vote on the agenda, I was mistaken. I, I was thinking October, so to November, so that was my mistake. I didn't need to abstain. I, I would vote yes if I could change my vote, but I'm okay. Anyway, forget that. I really don't have anything else, I guess. Merry Christmas to everyone. So, and Happy New Year.
Janet Waugh.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I did attend Teacher of the Year banquet. It was great, as usual. That's always kind of one of the highlights of the year as far as I'm concerned. I've attended, believe it or not, my first legislative conference, you know? And they, we had that at home. It's a little early for them to have it, but they did have one, so it was kind of interesting, you know, although no one knew anything or, they didn't guarantee there would be any money for anything, but, uh, it was, it was rather interesting. So, anyway, I'll echo John. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year.
Sally Cobble.
I've been decorating my house for Christmas. I did see, uh, receive an interesting, um, phone call and, Madam Chairman, I think due to board policy, we may have to vote on this. Education Commission of the States, in which I've been representing you for several years, called and asked if I would be on the Steering Committee.
called and asked if I would be on the steering committee for that. And that means they pay my way.
I like that.
And so I would like to do that if it's acceptable by this board. And I believe that's my only report. But I think there is something in the policy that we can, we have to get approval from the board to accept these national positions or something.
That was my understanding, and we haven't discussed it for quite a while, but I think in the past, our attorney had said that any travel that we did, whether it was paid for by the board or not, had to be approved by the board. That was when Dee was here, so that's been quite a while ago. So when we get to the travel portion of our agenda, can we do the motion on your...
Whenever you so choose.
That then, or do you want to do it now?
At that point, you have to serve on a committee. I think that would be separate then.
Okay.
To go to those events.
I make a motion she be approved to serve on it.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that Sally accept the appointment to the committee for the...
It's called Steering Committee.
Steering Committee for the...
Education Commission of the States.
Education Commission.
Of the states.
Yeah.
All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay.
That's an organization that we have seven positions on, you're not on. Seven positions, and the governor has an appointee, then it's supposed to be a member of the Senate and House Education Committee, a member from this board, and then a member at large. And then they usually take one person from that state to ask them to be on the steering committee for the whole organization. And that's what they asked me. And what Brad was referring to here, it's a nonpartisan, but it's very research-based information. And I think you've seen that I've sent you some of the forward, some of the things when I think that it's having anything to do with what we're talking about, I forward on to you this stuff, information.
Okay, thank you. Carolyn Campbell? Oh, I did want to mention, the one thing I've done since our last meeting was to attend the Teacher of the Year recognition, and what a special event that was, and what a dynamite gal we have representing the teachers in Kansas. And she's from Dodge City.
I didn't say that.
So, anyway, that was great. And those of you who attended, I'm sure, felt the same way. Carolyn Campbell?
Thank you, ma'am, and I'm just as proud of her as, because she started her teaching education in Topeka, Topeka High School. So I'm claiming her also. But as someone said, it's so inspirational when we go to those and celebrate the dedication, you know, of our educators. So I enjoy that also. I've been to KESHA Executive War since we've been here, and we had an appeal hearing of a family that they wanted us to make a final decision on a young man and his eligibility. He had moved from one district to another. And of course, with the educators, the sports people, you know, they're all, rule so-and-so says this, but you know who voted in favor of the family and the son? And another board member, Doug Glenn, and I didn't expect it, I was just going to vote the way I felt, because I'm always for the child and the family. And Doug Glenn, so, and then it was a third person. Another board member from southeast Kansas, I just lost his name. I'll give it to you. But the three board members voted in favor of the young man, but of course, we didn't prevail with that, but that's all right. Next month, there will be a league assignment and middle school, and that just blows my mind, being, having been so many years, when I was in junior high and then middle school, that how these league assignments and they're expected to travel. That's, I just don't think it makes a lot of sense to have junior high children going two hours away for, but anyway. But we have a league assignment hearing, and I've already had a call from a school in my district explaining their concern about loss of instructional time, you know, and getting those kids on a bus for two hours. Anyway, so, and I am, I do appreciate serving on that, because I have learned and grown so much about different things. I did attend the professional standards board's meeting, and I can't find my little notes that I had, but one of the things that they presented, they had a presentation from Bloomberg, Bloomberg Boards, and I think maybe that the department here is looking at maybe that, and it won't cost us any money, maybe, if we join? I mean, I don't know. So I think it's, I did ask Scott, was that something that you all were going to investigate more and then maybe, you know, give us some information on it? Then finally, this, oh, and I just had this, because I know when I went to K-State the other month about the college assistant migrant program, you know about that, don't you? Does everybody else know about it? Okay. So I have some information, you know, for us, so that we can, you know, be informed and know what is available for our children. And then this weekend, I went to KASB's convention, which was very good. I didn't attend all the general sessions and everything, but I walked into the legal, Donna Whitman and her legal presentation, and right at the beginning, she was talking about our ESI, and she was encouraging the board members that if they had concerns to reach out and contact, you know, their board, their state board member. And of course, she told them I was there. So I did sit in the back for a while after it was, that meeting was dismissed, but I think they were all in a hurry to go elsewhere. No one came to talk to me. I was disappointed. And she had, I'm passing this out, no, she didn't do this, the delegate assembly. I have always enjoyed going to the delegate assembly, because sometimes it can really get interesting for us to know that with the amendments. And there were a couple of amendments that, you know, folks didn't, they were interesting discussion, and I did talk to one of the board members that tried to get an amendment passed that did not pass, and she said she knew it was not going to pass, but she wanted it out this year, so then maybe next year, because the resolutions are really non-binding. It's just a part of what their agenda will be. And what they passed out, Mark Tomlin passed out, which I thought was good, and what did, well, Tom passed out something this morning, but this, the advocacy services, this is entitled "Discussion Questions for Legislators Prior to the 2015 Session." So this is what they distributed to the board members, and so I, you know, got to have you a copy of that. And I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Deana Horst?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I also attended the Teacher of the Year banquet, and I would concur that it was an exciting affair, and I think our Teacher of the Year is an excellent choice, and can't wait to see how far she goes in the whole competition of things. It's been quite a while since we had a national Teacher of the Year, so. Anyway, I also attended the last commission meeting, and I'm talking about the K through 12 Performance and Efficiency Commission. And it basically was an informative type thing where the service centers came to talk to the board or the commission. And I thought it was interesting that the chairman said, it was almost like, "Where have you been? We should have known about this, had heard from you at the very beginning." So I think there were some surprised, he was surprised, anyway, at all the things that our service centers provide. And in addition to that, there were, there was an individual who was a CPA, who is an auditor, who audits, and he spoke as well as the two entities that provide some services to our smaller districts, as far as they write. I think Green Bush even does payroll and so on for their school districts, and I think Azdeck does maybe a little of that as well. But there's also another entity that's located in Lawrence, who does a number, does a large number of the smaller districts in the state. There's a lot of their, of their bookwork, so to speak. And there was a question that was somewhat connected with, well, wouldn't it be a really good idea if everybody was working on the same, same system and had the same, everything the same? In other words, the same program, et cetera? And the, one of the individual, I think it's called Harris, that's out of Lawrence, also works with other states, and she indicated that some of the other states are not, that have gone with the system, an overall state system, are starting to go away from it, because it's not working as well as they had projected it would. So she indicated that there are so many differences between different sizes of school districts and districts in different locations, et cetera, that it would be pretty difficult to have a one-size-fits-all type setting. And so we'll see what they actually decide, because I'm not sure one person was totally enthralled with hearing that idea. But that sits on the commission. But we'll see whether they listen to the experts in making their decision. So, and one of the members is sitting out in the, in the audience, so I hope I covered that pretty well. So, anyway, we'll see what happens on Monday.
Thank you. Jim McNeese?
Thank you. Yesterday, in Clearwater, at the Service Center, which we speak so well of now, since we know about them, and the other service centers, but with the Clearwater Service Center and their director and board of directors, we host a legislative forum for District 10 legislators, superintendents, and board members. And we had about 42 people yesterday in attendance, six, well, seven for a while, legislators, senators, and reps. And we had a robust meeting. It was, it was very, very good. The topics ranged, obviously, from the road standards and finance to virtual schools and licensure and virtual schools, and it was, it was a very, very telling session in terms of their, we tend to focus on the big headline issues, but there's a lot of interest, questions, and different levels of support for other issues as well that are on the table. It's not just one issue. There are many. And I do want to commend, last year, we did it, and we had a larger representation of representatives. Had a couple that called up at the last minute with health problems and issues, and one of tardy passes, I don't know. But it went very well, and last year's went very well. And this year, we added board members, and it was really, really a great addition to have the local board members there as well as superintendents. Boy, they were just right on target. You know, they were, they were great. I've had the opportunity to visit with, and visit the Hayesville Schools, Belle Plaine. I was out at St. Pat's and Kingman, and West High School in Wichita. And there are great things happening. You know, Hayesville, to take them, we had, you know, Hayesville, Oakville Elementary School represented today as a blue ribbon school. Last year, they had a blue ribbon school as well in their middle school. Every year, they seem to have a finalist, as they did this year, in the Teacher of the Year. They're doing, there are great things happening in Hayesville, as they are in all schools. You know, I go to West High School and see their culinary arts program, the Project Lead the Way program, you know, what they're doing in terms of culture and de-escalation and interventions in the school, it's just, it's amazing. You know, we've got great things happening in our schools. And I hate, I don't hate, I love being a cheerleader for them, but I hate that I have to. You know, so today, when I asked about, you know, could we send a letter to representatives, we just assume many times that those representatives know in some way that there were blue ribbon award winners in their district. And Josie Witten and several others, Timmy, were at Kingman when we had a little celebration, but many times, they don't know. You know, and we need to be that cheerleader, you know, for our schools. Just make sure that they know that we're doing it. So I can tell you that I'm just really proud of the schools that I visited in the last month, and it re-energized me in terms of just the great things that are happening. You know, you walk through the schools, and you can just tell, you go in the classrooms, they're on task, there's great things happening. The Teacher of the Year, again, was another way of celebrating, and indeed, it was, everyone there was a winner that night. There were no losers, from the new teachers that we identified to the support systems that were there, the superintendents, the board members, the family members that were supporting our candidates for Teacher of the Year. And though we had to identify one for the national event, any one of them could have been the national Teacher of the Year without doubt. They were that, it was a strong group. As we talk about NASB in January, Ken and I will be at NASB for our January board meeting, as well as will be the study groups, and there'll be some new study groups this year. NASB seems to be doing just fine. All the things that I'm hearing right now are very positive, and in terms of, we have a calendar for next year, which is terrific, so we can plan all the way through the year where we're going to be. And the national conference will be in October, and it will be in Baltimore. And Chris is doing a great job of working with the states. I think some 23 states elected governors and have new board members, that will be appointing new board members, and we're working with them in terms of helping them develop profiles and strengths. And we're working with them in terms of helping them develop profiles and strengths that they should have in their board members. So we're being very active in terms of doing that. So NASB's going along very well. I'm really pleased with what's happening. So, thank you.
Thank you. Kathy Bush.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The KLFA meeting will be in January, so their next quarterly meeting will be coming up. The Coordinating Council, I'm not sure when the next meeting is, I actually need to get that date, but we usually meet quarterly, so those are basically my committees that I am on. I also, Wichita School District hosted an American Education Week event, where they had, Jim mentioned West High, they had, each day of the week, they had community members. It was great to have community members go into schools. I was able to attend three of those events. They had two events at two different high schools, one at a K-8 school. They have a phenomenal bilingual school in the, in the district. It's their K-8, one at an elementary and one at a middle school. So those were all wonderfully well-attended by community members. The one that I was able to attend at West, and Jim mentioned, and I think the community members were so impressed with the, basically the CTE programs, and seeing what is available in our high schools and what the kids are doing nowadays. So I think that was a, a great event. I also went out to Andover to their, they call it E-Cademy, it's their virtual school. And it was very interesting to listen to their presentation and have listened to their conversation about that virtual school that they have. And then to hear about the very diff, a lot of differences in how virtual schools are delivered, that was interesting for me to hear. And I think that goes to funding also. I think they're all funded the same, but they deliver services very differently. I don't know if that's something the Legislative Efficiency Group maybe needs to think about. Because they, they do deliver services very differently, but it was, so I really did enjoy going out and spending a little time over there to, to see their program and what they're doing, and the services that they're providing, not only for kids in the Andover District, but in other areas also. So there was some real good events over there. I also went to the Teacher of the Year banquet, and I have to echo what everybody else has said, you know, it was a wonderful event. Wonderful folks, just representing all the good things that are going on. You know, we continue to have to be those cheerleaders. It's fun to get out in the schools, it's fun to see the kids and all those activities that are going on. So that would be my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Before we move on to our last item on the agenda, which is approval of board travel, I wanted to once again say to all of you, thank you. I've been privileged to serve with each of you on this board. I'm proud of the work that we've done together. And I'll miss all of you, miss seeing you, and miss the friendships that I've grown to develop while I've been here. So good luck in your mission next year and in years to come. And I know you'll all be traveling, so let's go to our next item, and that's to approve board travel. Do I hear a motion to approve board travel? Moved by Kathy Bush, seconded by Dina Horst. Are there any additions? Ken Willard.
Yes, ma'am. Peggy, I'm sorry to do this to you, but I have three things this month that just have come onto my calendar. One is the 15th, the K-12 Efficiency Commission, I'll be attending that. Then I have a school visit to McPherson, or, excuse me, Sedgwick on the 18th. And a legislative deal at McPherson on the 22nd.
Salary and mileage for all three?
Yeah. That's it. Thank you.
Any other additions before we vote? All right, all in favor, raise your right hand. We have a unanimous vote. Oh, John, nine-zero vote to approve board travel. Kathy?
I don't know if this is a future agenda item, but last time I looked through the travel information, and I looked at our budget. And when I look at our budget for our expenses, and then I look at what the department has been cut, and I'm assuming our budget comes out of the department, that's what I'm assuming, I just think as a board, it would be prudent of us to really look at travel and see, are there ways that we can save money? Because the, as the revenue for the department goes down, I think we need to be very conscious of how we spend our money and are there ways? I mean, I kind of looked through the, they're not the policies, but the guidelines of the policies. I kind of looked through those the other day. And there's different categories, there's a category under which we are in various committee responsibilities. Some of them are pre-approved attendance, other are discretionary attendance. I just think we need to take a look at maybe these guidelines and take a look at how, you know, we can, because sometimes we don't even stay within our budget. And, you know, we just, we can't go over our budget. I mean, not when we're, when the, when the department has to spend money. So I would just, I mean, if, I mean, I'm just one person, but I would certainly suggest we take a look at that in the near future because, you know, what can we do to help the department, would be my suggestion.
Well, thank you very much. We had a discussion about that last month, and I think it's prudent for board members to really be aware and try to be as thoughtful and conservative on spending as possible.
Madam Chair.
And I, yeah, Ken Willard.
I just wanted to mention something on that. I don't recall in the 12 years I've been here that we've ever gone over our budget. I mean, some of us individually have because of the various issues, but I remember a discussion when, like, the first term that I was here, that that inevitably, inevitably happens, but as long as we didn't go over the budget entirely.
Well, the, the information I got from Peggy at the last meeting and mentioned was that we had gone over budget totally by several thousand dollars.
Really?
Yes.
For the six months or for the 12 months?
For the fiscal year. For the fiscal year.
Well, we don't, we don't ever see that number then. I don't know how that-
Well, I, I did bring it up and mention that at our last meeting, and with the intent of, you know, raising our awareness of what was happening. So, things are different than, you know, we're under a lot more fiscal constraint now, so... But I, something I forgot was suggestions for future agendas. I forgot to mention that. And were there any?
I have one.
Jim McNeese.
And it goes along with what Kathy was saying. And nothing against other groups that are working in different venues, but virtual schools was a big issue for, for, at my legislative session yesterday, from the boards, the superintendents, and the legislators. And that, there's just a lot of variability in services provided for cost, and who's in control, and who's regulating, and who's, who's doing what. I know the legislature last year attempted, in the budget process, to limit or to cut, reduce the per peopal spending, and they may have even done that. I don't recall, I don't think they did. But there's a lot of, how you deliver special education over, over virtual school. You know, obviously, any delivery of special education services is, is predicted by their IEP. But I heard some good things, and I heard some ugly things. And I just think it's something this board needs to just look at. Yes?
Brad.
To remind everybody, Legislative Post Audit this fall was passed to do an audit of virtual schools, and they will be coming out with that report probably before the next board meeting. So you'll have their findings on-
I heard about them, and yes, I'd, I'd look forward to that. But I, I would still say it's, it's still a responsibility. There's a lot of education, good and bad, going on in virtual schools. And I'm not here to make a general indictment, but I just know that there's a lot of confusion out there in the field and need of leadership.
But Brad, my recollection was there was some committee that oversaw the operation, or at least kind of kept track of what was happening with virtual schools, and Dave Dennis was on it. Do you remember that? And he would come back and report on what their meetings, you know, what-
They haven't done one in two years.
Is that something that's disappointing?
But I don't know what happened with that.
Well, we, we discovered, when Peggy was putting these commissions together, that we used to have a board member on that, and then we did not, you or I or something, because they said the committee didn't need a board member anymore. And we were going to ask you about that, Brad, and we forgot to ask you before this board meeting.
Is there still-
Good question.
Brad, is there still a committee?
Yes, there, there is a, we have one person in our agency that, like, we have one math consultant, one person that oversees virtual schools.
And who is it?
Jessica Noble. But there is a statewide virtual school committee that-
That's what we were on.
That, that, I don't want to say polices themselves, but kind of governs virtual schools and the operations of it.
Can they decide to take us off or off of that?
Yeah, I'm not, that might have just been something where it was just overlooked to reappoint someone to that, but I'll look into that.
But Jim, I think that's an excellent idea and an issue that we, you as a board, need to look at, so.
A second item, and I, and I'm just going to put this out because I've been at several presentations by Mark Tolman from KS, KASB. And at our legislative forum yesterday, he made about a 20-minute presentation on a little bit of history and on the Rose Standards, and, and it was good for all to hear, because they all heard the same thing. And I know we've heard from Mark, many of us were at a function about three months ago at their headquarters down here, and it's been added to, just something we might think about, either to have provided for us or to have Mark come here and make that presentation to us, you know. So we're all hearing the same thing, at the same time and in the same way. Not that we couldn't do it as, as, as a staff, that Brad couldn't do it, or others, but they've spent an inordinate amount of time in preparing it, and I didn't see anything that would be in conflict with where we are. It was just a very good presentation. And, and each presentation I've learned new stuff. And it's going to be a, a, a large issue, obviously, in the legislative time, and I would, I'd just encourage us to think about doing that in January or February. Wouldn't take long, answer questions, get us all on the same page. Thank you. I'm sure he'd be willing to do it.
Okay, I'm sure he would too. Any other suggestions for future agenda items? Okay, there being none, I think we're going to reconfigure the room just a little bit for our meeting with Randy Watson. We had kind of gone through our list of events and activities that take place and had made kind of a list, and Peggy is running that off so we can all look at it and see which of those items we need to discuss or address at this point. So that might be a starting place, but you may have a list of questions. I don't know if we ought to look at questions first or look at the events and activities that we thought about.
I don't know, but the way that microphone sits-
Are we supposed to-
Randy, don't you expect him to start singing?
That would be scary. Jack Carson and my director in high school grabbed me in the hall and said, you know, I think you need to be in choir. And I said, I can't sing. And he was looking for some athletes, I think, to be in choir. So he stuck me in choir, and stuck me next to Kenny Herman, who was a fantastic singer. Fortunately, I can match pitch enough that he convinced me over the years that I was a great singer.
This looks more like some CIA congressional here.
It does.
Well-
To the best of my recollection.
Well, Randy, we want to thank you for making time for us today. And I think when you and I talked, the overriding issue was you just have so much time available from now until you are officially on board. You had concerns about what kinds of activities or responsibilities that we would be expecting, and, and you probably had ideas to put forth to us. So we just passed out this list that Peggy had helped put together of events, activities that always take place. And we had thought maybe a starting point would be just to go through these and have the board give you input about whether or not they feel that it's important for you to be present for these, but maybe there's a better way of proceeding. So we might start with this, it might not take very long, and then you have ideas, I imagine, that you want to, or do you want to start with your idea and then go to our list?
Well, we can do it any way you'd like, Jenna. I certainly have some ideas of some things we may want to think about for the future. But I have about 20 days of vacation, and I'm willing to use, between January 1 and June 30th, I'm willing to take all of those. I do need to take a few days. My son will be graduating for, in Georgia, the end of May, so I'm going to go up and be excited about that. Be real excited if he graduates with a job. I'll be really excited about that. So a couple of days there, but the bulk of the days, 17, 18 days, I would like to devote how you think the best way to-
Okay.
And I, I have some ideas about a visioning process, but however you'd like to do.
Well, why don't we just briefly go through this list and prioritize, okay, do we think it's important for Randy to be here for all of our board meetings? I mean, that would take about half of his days if he did that. He could, you know-
Take one. He could also listen to-
Well, that's what I was going to say. He, he could stay informed about what happened at the board meetings. He could have the agendas ahead of time. Yeah. So as board members, should that be a priority for use of his time? I don't really, John Bacon.
Well, I don't, I can't imagine Randy wanting to use his vacation time. He's not being compensated from this agency at this point.
Well, we did discuss, and I've, have you had further discussions with Dale or the HR person about, because I had understood there, there might be a way of compensating, but it wouldn't be.
Then I, if we can do that, then I would try to give as much time as he possibly would give us, yeah, if we can pay him. But if we're not paying him, I, I think he should use his vacation time for Randy time.
We are setting up that, on days when he's here working on behalf of the agency or the board, he will be getting paid.
Okay, like a daily rate?
Right. Then it's whatever he'll give us, you know? Yeah.
Well, I'd like to think that maybe the first day, because our second day, some days is not so routine, but maybe the first day in some of those months that you could come.
Well, he could look at the agenda and see what items might be very important to, as we move forward.
I'm thinking too about maybe the different presenters that might, that he might, he can't interact with them on the, on the email, the website, and, you know, that'd be your choice, but if possible, it's not going to be that.
Kathy Bush.
Thank you.
Thank you. To me, I think some of the priority things would be, I don't know if it's necessarily a retreat. You talked a little bit about a visioning process. I would assume that'd be part of a retreat. I think that's real important. I mean, attendance that you can do as far as board meeting. And then I think work over the legislature. I think it's important for you, I mean, I know you're still Superintendent McPherson, and so you would certainly have legislative interests there also. But also, as the incoming Commissioner of Education, I would think there would certainly be appropriate times for you to be working with the legislature. I would see those as some kind of key things, in my opinion.
I agree, and. Yeah. Working with the legislature and whatever, and I know you have ideas about whether you call it a retreat or whatever that we need to discuss, but those would probably be two priorities. Like I said, attendance at board meetings, I think that's kind of optional, depending on the meetings.
As Carolyn mentioned, I do watch virtual meetings, you know. You can't interact at all, but I do, and Peggy's got about 70 minutes out.
And I'm thinking that maybe some of your agenda when you come into work with the staff here, you might try to, you know, put those on our first day of our board meeting. You could pop in and out.
That certainly is.
And Dana, did?
I was just going to say, might not necessarily have to be here for the entire or maybe one of the days. I'd be just part of the day. Where it might be when we're taking up, for example, ESI-type regulations. That you, it might be good to have you here.
Jim.
Because you'll be involved in implementing whatever we decided.
And Sally, did you have a comment?
Yeah. Randy, I look at that when we hired you, we agreed to July 1 as your starting date. And I think you're being very generous with us, with your days off or your vacation time. I guess I would like, I know I would like your attendance at the February 10 event, for sure. And then I would, I'd like to hear how you would like to use your days, the rest of those days, and so we hear both sides, and then I'll tell you.
How to use?
Yeah, yeah. I guess I'd like to hear how you'd like to use them, and maybe that's a far better plan than what we ever think of.
Well, and I think that's very true. As we were discussing, I thought we really need, Randy's the one that can give us ideas about what he's thinking. So let's hear from you, and you can say one more.
Thank you, I'm sorry. The March meeting, when we go to the school for the deaf and the blind, I think that that would be an excellent time for you to travel with us on the highway to most of those schools.
That's the second day, too.
Yes, the second day. So he wouldn't come the first day.
Well, thank you. I've been thinking a lot about the transition, and I know you have, too, and I want to thank Brad. You know, he's been great in the transition and will continue to be as we go through the next several months. What I've been thinking about is a very broad visioning process. And I want to walk you through what's in my brain, and then let's, let's kind of maybe go back and forth. So I have a little skeleton, some things I'll share with you, but I really want it to be a discussion. As I talked to you when I interviewed, and as I continued to listen, and Brad and I have a lot of conversations. In fact, I think both his wife and my wife think we probably spend too much time talking and texting and back and forth, yeah. Is, I think, and I'm talking about the field, and when I say the field, I'm mostly talking about principals and superintendents. You know, while I certainly listen to teachers in our district, I don't, I don't get a sense of teachers, other than the Teachers of the Year and, you know, that group, as much as, is what's our vision, where are we going? There seems to be so many things coming at you and coming at them. What's our purpose? You know, we have a strategic plan. What's our purpose? What's our vision? Couple that with, I think we need to give everyone hope. I really, you know, right now, lack of money, lack of, lots of things coming at you, you get a sense of where's our hope, and I think we can give that. I think we can give that. And then three, and one, for many, many years, I think the state board was able to just carry on the business and across the street, really just allow that to occur. Here's the great news. There's a lot of interest in education. Now, maybe the not-so-great news is we don't all agree where that's going, but there's a lot of interest in wanting to do the right thing. And I think we could lead that. I think we could lead bringing people together with that. Now, those are huge, you know, that's some huge lifting on our part. But I'm just telling you what's in my head, and just so, you know, we can just come back and say, well, that's not what's in my head, and we can have a discussion. But I was, this is. This is a map of Kansas counties. And I thought. It's always good to know where the end is, so you know what we're going for. And my thought is, what if we led a visioning process across the state of Kansas? State board and some members of the department led that, inviting higher ed, legislators, board members, and community to talk about what is, what do we want with our young adults in Kansas? What do we want those young adults to be like, look like? What is that visioning, you know, draw that visioning process, clearly define a vision for the qualities and characteristic of what it means to be a successful Kansan, successful young Kansan. That's just what's been going through my mind. And, and then, that takes time. But then, once we have that, then strategic plan from that. Bring all that information back, strategic plan from that. And hopefully, we have then common voices, or at least input, that lead to those, that lead us to a very clear, defined vision of what we want, which allows us then to backward map that to higher ed, K-12, to early childhood, and then start to prioritize how do we get there. And I think work that I've done with the McPherson Board, it helped clarify some of the things that come at us and prioritize, is that important, or what's the importance to that in our overall vision? Because, as you know, you spend a lot of time doing this work. And, and so do I. And how best to use our time to help students be successful? And then what time should we put little time, I mean, here, or more consented, because we really need to spend time on whatever X is? So that's, in general, Jenna, what I was thinking. When it occurred, I'm ready to start as early as February, but we've got, the legislatures, legislators will be in session, so I don't know if we grab all of those primarily when we do a Topeka or in Topeka. But really have people sit down with us leading, all of you, and asking those questions, informing those visions, and walking through that vision process. So we might be, I'm showing one here in Salina, Dina. That obviously is your area, but I would invite all of you that could make it, you know, to go to every one of them. I know that you maybe won't be able to make all. I showed 12, and Steve's probably going to say, "I don't see my district," and Jim's going to say, "Mine, there wasn't anything magical about this." I was trying to kind of pick where we might have some higher ed already in that area, like Haze or Emporia. I was trying to kind of look at, you know, population centers and service centers where we could host things at very little cost, if no cost. So, and then trying to look at that. But anyway, I thought, and Brad and I have talked some about this, I just think we're poised, I think, a lot of people are interested in, are we being successful? And let's lead that way. I mean, let's really get out there and bring the people that are talking. And some, and this may not, you know, we'll have to listen to people that disagree, but let's maybe think about doing that. So that's, those are my thoughts.
Randy, I noticed that February 10, there's a planned event with the House and Senate Education Committees. Would, maybe that wouldn't be an appropriate time to gather some input that.
Maybe we could do that with that. We could lead them through the same process.
And Jim and Sally are the ones that have been the lead on that, so you could talk to them. But in your mind, and I think you're right, it's important to start working on this before July.
I think so. The difficulty is, of course, things will be coming at us that in some cases, we may want to say, can you just wait? Because we will get there if it's important. And I mean, there are already things. We have an efficiency task force just released, you know, their findings today, and their meeting next week, and you've got, you know, your agenda's full of things coming at you. But at some point, I think it's always good to take a step back and say, when we're done with all of our work, and we, you know, the end of the day, I think about this, when I put in the ground, did we make a difference in the lives of kids? And I know that's why you're here. And so how can we, how can we bring people together for that purpose? And then describe what that looks like in general terms so that we know if we've got the right assessments, if we've got the right programming, if we've got the right funding, and how do the Rose capacities fit into all that? Versus, sometimes to me, things just look like events or activities coming at us. And I like to put things, I like to see where the end is. So I'm giving you what I think, and I, some of you, you know, have talked to me briefly, and I've shared a little bit of that with you, but you may not be thinking of that at all. And I can certainly work within whatever framework you'd like.
Well, I'd like to hear comments from other board members. But I think what you're suggesting would be very helpful. And it appears to me that scheduling a board retreat early is not in conformance with that plan. I mean, you need this information before you do a board retreat, and that retreat could even be, you know, in the summer.
That would be my thought, to maybe, to maybe do that in the summer or late spring. But again, those are just my thoughts, and you may have very different ideas.
Well, I, why don't people just feel good about commenting? I don't need to call on you unless everybody tries to talk at once. But I want you to be able to converse with Randy and share your thoughts, so.
Well, these areas, are you thinking of pulling in not only legislators, but community members and parents?
Higher ed.
Higher ed.
School board members.
Anyone who would be interested in business folks, everyone who's interested in having input. And I think that's very valuable, personally. And I like the idea of collecting the information before. The way I look at February 10 evening event is more of getting to know you. And sometimes you need to know people before you really will tell them what you really think. And, and have a trust, build a trust in that manner. So I see that as an important event, but I don't know that it's a good idea to set it up as that sort of a hearing, a sounding board type thing. Those who want you to know what they think will tell you right then and there. They will share that with you anyway. And others, it may take them a lot longer to share, just from personal experience. But unless your intent was something, unless Sally and Jim's intent was something different. Because I saw it as a dinner, which was more of a get, kind of a get to know you.
I think that that's the primary purpose. I think Jim's been visiting with Senator Abrams some. And Jim, I don't know how many issues we were really talking about or whether you, we wanted to run it different than the last time, and we wanted it to be table talk.
We were looking at table talk, and I could see linking this in some way. I think we have to have a bigger and better plan than just say, February 10, we're going to start it and kick it off, you know. We can certainly encourage them and tell them our plan at that time because they'll be very interested from their own regional, you know, issues, you know, as they'll want to be at these. So I wouldn't look at it necessarily on my first response to what you presented here as one of those forums, because then, because I'll just jump ahead and say, I think this is a great idea. Okay, now we try to take the idea into application. And I've led these, and I've been a participant in these, and huge venues, you know, in Wichita. We've had superintendents come in, and there'll be 500 people in there, you know, and they want to do talking points. Well, you have to structure it, you know, and it takes a lot of organization, and it takes a lot of purposeful efforts to make them successful. All you do is frustrate people, and I know you're not going to do that. We'll do a good job, but it is a big job to do this, you know, and to honor the people, like I see, I think that's Goodland out there?
Colby.
Colby. Colby, that's right, Darren, I get lost out in the West sometimes, you know. People are going to be driving in from a lot of miles, and you have to honor their commitment to do that, you know. And it needs to be really well-oiled and organized. I don't think we'd be ready, but having the legisla, on February 10, having the legislators engaged in maybe getting some feedback about how they'd like to see it, or invite, or, you know, know that they're a participant would be good. Yeah.
I like the idea because it gives us a chance to go with you and introduce you, too. I mean, it could be more than one fold. So it gives me a chance to go with you out there, introduce you. And when we did those focus groups, you know, for the, I had really, what I thought was really good turnout, Randy, I had over 20 people to each one of mine. And I had teachers, parents, business, maybe not a lot of them, but each group was represented. And I, my problem, if we're going to do it, I want the turnout and getting the turnout. And I, my problem, if we're going to do it, I want the turnout, and getting the turnout is vital. But I like the plan, and then, and then we come all together and do a retreat. I think we've got something to base. It's that data-driven decision-making, instead of off our hips or out of what we feel. But I, I like it. I really do.
I just had a board meeting yesterday with our board, and we looked at some data from the National Clarion House, just released their, their data. So we were looking at 2014 graduates, and we were looking at 2006 graduates, and, and I said, you know, data helps tell us a picture, but what we're really about is looking at every student and trying to improve their lives. And that's what, you know, Jim, I think that's what's going to drive people, is that we're going to be talking about how to improve every Kansans' lives, and how best to do that. I think that that drives people to want to come out and participate in that. And when you ask, when you, when you run these and focus the questions on the broader issues of what it makes, takes to make a successful young Kansa, that's different than tell me the programs, you know, we can get into that later, but what are, what are the characteristics and attributes? Then that helps drive us as to assessments and programming, and how we organize things, and how we go about things, how you spend money. It helps focus you a little bit more. Now, it doesn't stop all the distractions, but it, I think it helps focus, and if we can bring everyone to the table, just my thoughts.
I think it's a wonderful idea, you know, and, and from the communication standpoint, it's an excellent idea.
I, I think the timing's right, Randy. I don't know if the board members realize that the Methodist Church and this conference put together this session on supporting your public schools. And they have, I know I went to three of them out just around Dodge City, and so they've got the churches now going into the public schools to see how they can help and partner, and it's a big movement out in Western Kansas. And then if we can come in and follow that, we've got the public already weaving and being excited about that. My area's ready. That's all I can say.
And again, I don't know if you like the plan, I don't know if you like the locations. I, you know, I wrestled Sally with whether the show's sublet, it's a service center, but do you go to Garden or Dodge, because, you know, so again, you know your areas better than I. Those are just my attempts at looking at the map and trying to make sense out of it. Well, I have lived in Kansas all my life, so.
I think it looks great, but I need to hear from people that'll be here. I'm not going to be here, so what, what do you think down at that end of the table? Do you like this approach, or? Okay, there you go.
Well, I, I think that there has never been a statewide conversation like this, and I think it's, it's time for it to happen. There's a lot of talk about what we do, but it's normally about what we did to them, and, and about a lot of, a lot of misperceptions about what, what goes on here, and what our intent is, and what we're trying to accomplish. So I think that the timing is really good for it, and if it takes longer than two months or three months to do it, so be it, in my view. But I think it needs to happen, and I'm just thinking that if we're wanting legislators in particular to attend these individual events, I think the February 10th meeting is going to be too full for this. I mean, I don't think we could do it justice, but we'd need to have these on Saturdays, possibly, because I think we'd have a chance of getting some of them, as long as legislatures in sessions, if we could, if we could plan these out on Saturdays across the state, it seems to me that it would, it would be worth considering, and I think it's a great idea. I had a conversation recently with someone at my church about this whole idea as well, about how they can be involved. Everybody's interested in doing what's best for our kids, but there's really very little adult conversations about how we can work toward it together, and I think that's, this is a great, a great way to go about it, so I fully support it.
So it looks like it's a positive thumbs up for that plan, Randy.
Okay, then we would probably want to talk about, or I can work with the department and Brad and others, you know, to bring you back a timeframe, and, you know, you can tell me, again, as you look at these, I, I welcome Dina to say, look, Randy, you got me going up to Sabatha or Hiawatha and Salina, but maybe we ought to meet in Cordia. I understand that, and you, you know your areas better, but when, where, what day of the week? Do we, you know, try to do two or three in, you know, in a week, and then take a break? You know, those, those are things I can bring back, and, and we can work on together, but I'd like to have it done before we get to the summer, so that our summer, then, we can then do a little retreat with, with, with each other, and bring that, all that information, and then do our strategic plan based upon what the people told us, so.
Could we call it something besides planning for a strategic plan?
Yeah.
We should have a snappy name.
I'm not very good at those, so hopefully-
I'm not either.
-the department can give-
Yeah, we need a snappy name.
That, that, and design, drawing, I'm not your guy, I, I can't, so.
Please come to the strategic planning, plan.
I have this vision of a successful Kansa, now we, I didn't, we need a model, we need a, we need a good slogan for that, but.
Bring hope back to public education.
Too long. Good idea, too long.
I, I just think, I think this gives the board the opportunity to lead and bring people together. You know, people have reached out since I was named commissioner, and I appreciate that, it's been very humbling, and, and most of them have an idea of what I should do, of course. But, but it really struck me that there's deep concern about education in Kansas, and I, I think too quick, we're, you know, we're quick to label one way or the other, but what I hear is a genuine concern, there's some of it, you know, isn't, but most of it's a genuine concern, and if we focus, you know, our hardest jobs, our hardest jobs every day is to focus on the kids, because the adults are, the adults, we'd always deal with adults, and that takes up a lot of our space, because adults are going to deliver to the kids, but how do we keep, how do we keep moving for those students? Janet, you hear Cindy Lane talk about that all the time, you know, it's her passion, and, and that's been mine, too, as, as I get older, I just, every student I come across, you know, I was in Manhattan this morning, you know, with K-State, and I just stopped by to see some of the kids I knew in the sororities and fraternities that were at K-State. Of course, none of them were there, which I thought was good, which meant they were at class, hopefully, from McPherson, just to see how they were doing, and, you know, and to touch base, because I try to do that with families in McPherson. How can we help every kid be successful? It's not just us, it's higher ed, it's legislature, it's moms and dads, everyone has a role in this, you know, everyone has a role, but how can we lead that? How can we bring people together to have that discussion?
Because it's your vision that you're going to hopefully have legislators at some of these sessions, because then I think you need to ask them to get the calendar, because there's turnaround time, different times when they're, well, they will be home, otherwise you're going to, these meetings almost would have to be on either Friday afternoons or Saturdays, if that's one of your-
Or when we come to Topeka, you know, we capture something different, you know, for the, for them, you're right.
Okay.
Because if we talked, you could almost try and get something scheduled here in Topeka for the legislators, and hopefully get more of them, because they're here, and you can get them all at once.
Yeah.
Well, what I'd like to think, though, that we're going to have these sessions where the legislators are going to hear people from their communities-
It's powerful, too.
Rather than just-
Each other.
Yeah, right, because it's sort of like, like Disney World.
You'll have to elaborate, Dr. Horst.
Because everything's focused on what they think.
You were the stitching soul.
Right, I, I would agree with, she's lived here long enough in the Capitol to know that's kind of what happens. So I would agree that it needs, it'd be better to get them out where their constituents are.
Randy, I, I would make a couple of recommendations. One is, you know, obviously electronic media is another resource in terms of people who couldn't make it to these different times, but also, so any kind of electronic media, you know, that we've done before, would certainly be good. The second one is, we've talked about legislators, we've talked about, you know, business leaders and parents, but I'd, I'd almost want to hear some, I'd like to hear from some kids. I'd like to make sure the schools knew that, in the schools, that, you know, that student leaders especially would be invited, you know, to participate and ask to, and, not just to attend, but to participate. And there's a host of student leadership organizations that certainly could rally some great kids, you know, to be there. My last point would be to make sure that we have, we represent the diversity of Kansas, you know, that, and we, and we deliberately do things in this process that engage groups and individuals of people who are not necessarily willing to share, but not in the venues like this, and I saw that in, in Wichita. You know, that if you went to the, to the church, for instance, you, you, you got great participation, you went to the school, you didn't get great participation, you know, so thinking outside the box, that we might have to go to some places that we didn't think of, to make sure we're giving, though, all our, our citizens the opportunity to participate, and that's, that's all I'll say on that. I think it's a wonderful idea, and, and the things you've heard at the table here so far are great.
From covered wagons to smartphones, just an idea.
Well, I, I think that we could talk about it in terms of the new commissioner and State Board of Education convening a statewide conversation on the future of public education in Kansas. And this is a massive thing we're talking about, because it, it needs to be publicized in the media as well, so that businesses know about it. We can't contact these people individually, but I think it just needs to be a statewide convening that, that we're determining the direction for public education as we go forward. So it's going to be very, very big, if it happened, I mean, if we do this, bigger than we think. And, I mean, the venues are going to be, could be tough to get, because I think there'd be a lot of people show up, if it's presented properly.
Do it with access to need. And just longer, to help with.
So you will work with the department personnel and kind of try to get that initiative off the ground? What other questions or issues did you have? I'm always the one that's trying to kind of keep us on a time schedule, so I don't mean to cut off this conversation about this plan, because I think it's great.
I want to invite you, I think it was Dina who had mentioned you'd been at the Teacher of the Year banquet, and several of you were there, and I apologize, I couldn't be there. My weekends oftentimes are taking, I'm going to take care of my dad in Coffeyville, and he, he doesn't like that very much, but he likes if I do come, so, his life. But as many of you know, I was honored also this year as Kansas Superintendent of the Year, and that, that luncheon, it's going to be a luncheon, is here in Topeka, the Historical Society, on January 14th, and I would welcome if any of you would like to attend, and it would be at my guest. So just let me know, or let Peggy or Penny know, and I'll make arrangements for you to, to be there as my guest.
So are you the Superintendent of the Year for 2015 or 2014?
2015, because the way it's, I don't know how the teacher, is the Teacher of the Year 14 or 15? 15, because it goes 14, 15 is the way it's actually like that. But anyway, that's, and I have to be in San Diego for the AASA Superintendent of the Year, so some of my time also is devoted to that a little bit, too. So what I want to make sure in this is that I honor you, the work that you want to do in this transition, and I want to honor McPherson, because they're going to be very gracious for me to take my vacation, but, but I want to also make sure their transition goes well, too. So I'll work with you hard to do that. And, and I'll say this now, because I'll get to say it later, Ken, this, this is, I look at this like a bond issue, and this is going to be a lot of hard work, but it's the first stage. And anyone that's been through a bond issue knows the real hard work is after you pass the bond issue. Ken Lawd said in a board meeting several years ago, and heard me kind of talk about a process we were doing at McPherson, and the next year, when he came back, he said, I didn't think you'd really do anything with it. You know, we talk a lot, but this will be the hard part, and then the real hard part, we're going to need to do something with this information we get, so. Well, I'll work with Brad and Dale and others in the department, we'll start putting together some plans and use their input, but I'm excited. I keep you close on time?
I didn't mean we had to stop. I thought you probably had lots of other things to throw out here, or questions you might have that have come into your head since we last talked.
You know, when you, entering my 22nd year at McPherson, when you spend that much time there, what you start to take for granted is you know everything, and when you walk down the hall, you're, you're the institutional knowledge. So I went and dropped off some stuff in my new office and quickly realized I know nothing. Well, I knew nothing at McPherson, but everyone thought I did, because I'd been there a long time. And so I'm, tomorrow morning, I'm going to be here all day, meet with Brad and Dale, first thing in the morning, we'll meet at the end of the day, and, you know, I, I need to learn, you know, everything about the workings, and, you know, I had to learn where the, where the closest restroom was, and just things that, so those are, so I'm, I'm in the mode, just like your new teachers, I, I'm not smart enough to even know the questions to ask right now, I just need to, to kind of get, learn and, and, and meet all the great people here.
Randy, I think our board needs to realize that on the same day as you're, that you so graciously invited us to, is the same day that we go to lunch with the career and technical students. So we might be able to-
Go to the career, go to the career and technical students.
We might go.
Spend your time with the kids. Uh, 12:30 to 2:30.
On the 14th?
Mine's on a Wednesday. Anytime you have a choice between kids and me, make the kids.
We do not want to assume what kind of-
No, no, I, I just, I wanted you to know about it and, and invite you, but I hadn't, I'm not expecting any of you to feel an obligation to be there at all, so.
So the definite date you need to put on your calendar from our perspectives is the February 10th evening with the House and Senate Education Committee.
I have.
And from there on, everything's flexible, I think, depending on what your needs are and, you know, what you work out with the department.
Well, as you can, as you can expect, you would know, that as of whenever I walked in here, I have 24 requests to go speak somewhere about what the vision is you have for education. And I'm, I, there's two things, one, I don't have 24 days to do that. Now, if it's in the evening, I can make it work, but, because I wanted to talk to you about this, and two, this isn't my vision, you know, I'm going to help lead with you, but this isn't where I want us to go, it's where, what, Kansas, where we want to go together. And I, so I don't want to get out in front of anyone. We need, we need to do this work and- We need, we need to do this work, and the hard part is, many of you know Bob Shannon in, in Manhattan, and he and I are good friends, a long time good friends. And he, he gets on me all the time about, you know, designing the airplane as we fly it. And so all these things are coming at us, and everyone wants to go, go, go. Maybe if we can just take a deep breath and say, before we go, go, go anymore, should we all kind of maybe see where we all want to end? And then we know where to spend our time. So I understand everyone, you know, new commissioner, let's see what he or she wants to say. But I'd love to go through this process with you.
Thank you. Other comments or questions or advice or anything? Did, do you have enough direction now or feeling for what, what the board's thinking?
Yes.
That I think the board's right on board with you.
And, and Janet, just because you're leaving the board doesn't mean that we won't be calling on you and lots of things.
You probably won't be able to find me.
I don't want to say that publicly. I know, I know, I know. I can add her down, so, well, thank you.
Well, thank you so much. And that's the last item on our agenda, so we are adjourned.
Well, Janet, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.